Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open the special town council meeting for the town of Fairfax. It's Tuesday, November 19th at 7:00 PM. We're in the Fairfax Women's Club, 46 Park Road, Fairfax, California. And it's also available on Zoom. So let's do the pledge of allegiance. If you feel comfortable doing so, please join. Thank you. Before we do the roll call, I just want to mention to folks, this is a special meeting. Special meetings require 24-hour notice, not 72 hours. And there is no open time at special meetings. And our next meeting will be December 4th, and there will be open time then. So with that... No, no, no. I just made an announcement. Okay, Michael, please sit down. Deb, you need to sit down. We need to do roll call. Michael, please sit down. No, no. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you very much. Okay, Madam Clerk, could we do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Catrano.
Present.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Here.
Mayor Kohler.
Here. Could I get a motion for approval of the agenda?
They're moved. Second.
Okay, so that was Vice Mayor Blash, second. Councilmember Hellman, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Catrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. I'll go ahead and read the land acknowledgement. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Mewak people of present-day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and merging. Meeting protocol: The mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language or other language that is problematic and are ridiculing the character or motives of council members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Please turn off all cellular phones or place... Michael, could you please take that outside? Please turn off all cellular phones or place them in the silent mode. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. Any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. We're moving on to the consent calendar. The council may approve the entire consent calendar with one action vote. In the alternative, items on the consent calendar may be removed by the town council or staff member for separate discussion and vote. Public comment for items on the consent calendar happens once rather than after each individual item. During the public comment period on consent items, speakers may comment on any items from this section of the agenda. Each speaker will have up to two minutes and may speak only once. Was there any questions of staff, or did anyone want to pull anything from consent? Seeing none. Okay, and I want to remind folks that we also have a supplement for item two, or a radish sheet, which is also on the safe outside. So with that, I'll open it up to comment on the consent calendar. And we will start. It is 7:04. We'll do 15 minutes... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm mixing up with open time. I'm very confused. Okay, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I'm certainly contesting your consent calendar. I do look at it as cowardice that you will not really enjoy the public to have a discussion to understand what you're doing. I challenge the notion of changing a quorum and leaving our Robert's rules and coming to a new set of rules typed up by the administration for these procedures.
That is...
No, no, no.
That's on the consent.
This is also consent, because you're saying that you want it on consent. Additionally, reading through it real quickly, there's also a requirement of due process. You advise any and all people, your citizens, that are duly affected by your decisions. I just went up to the homeless camp, and I spoke to Shay Lee, Joey, Bob, and Jenny, and another gentleman I couldn't see, and they were not aware of this notice for this meeting, and they are materially affected. Therefore, you're out of your own due process. You're trying to change in this evening for the consent and the agendaized item. So I find the whole procedure invalid, and it should be removed from consent. Thank you.
Excuse me. Next speaker, please. Sean. Sean, you need to press the button. You just turned it off.
My comment is around the relationship with the town manager rule in the handbook you're proposing to approve before us in the consent calendar. The rulebook states no member has extraordinary powers beyond those of other members. The mayor and vice mayor have additional ceremonial and administrative responsibilities, but all council members are equal in establishing policies, voting, and other significant areas. But then later, it says majority vote is going to be required for even adding an agenda item, thus rendering minority voices on the council silent. And then it later states mayor and vice mayor will be the only ones to direct the town manager, and that, to me, is extraordinary. So I ask you not to approve this version of the rulebook in the consent calendar and to wait for new council members to make such changes just weeks before the new council arrive. I also request the following: that you review the full set of bids received for the Park Road drainage project using ARPA funds.
That's not on consent.
No, this ties into the consent.
It's not on consent.
Yeah, on the consent calendar, there is a rulebook where only the mayor and the vice mayor can direct the town manager, and this specifically speaks to that, and I've lost time. I want you to review the full set of bids from the ARPA funds, the detailed criteria used in selection process, and any justification or explanation for why the latest experienced... the least experienced bidder was chosen, especially in light of the limited experience and bid form misrepresentations, and why Lauren Umbertus, the public works director, solicited Dan Olson Architects on an addendum dated October 16, 24, under the title of Division Manager, Public Works of Sausalito, not of Fairfax. Does he work for both? As residents, we place our trust in the town manager to make decisions that serve our community's best interests. However, I wish to express concern over the recent decision to award the contract to Castillon Company, and since only you, the mayor and vice mayor, will be able to instruct her, that we need to find out why this company that was one year and eight months old put two years on the contract and was awarded it. They just issued the DBA three months ago that the least experienced had never completed a project greater than $390,000, and they were awarded a $1.9 million contract to redo our roads. None of it seems on the up and up.
Thank you.
Can I ask...
No. Next speaker, please. We're not in a manner back and forth. Go ahead.
Yeah, hi. This is, yeah, I'm Mike Gearinggelli, otherwise known as Mikey Likes Fairfax. I'm objecting to this meeting in particular because I don't believe it was noticed correctly. There seemed to be a lot of confusion on it. And also, I'm requesting that item number two on the consent calendar be pulled for discussion and held over to the new town council when we start in December. I think there was a clear mandate by the citizens of Fairfax that Frank and I are involved, and this seems like kind of a, to me, anyway, a lame duck move to change the rules in midstream. That's how I'm feeling about it. When I served on the council before, this is not how it worked. So I hope that you take my request seriously, pull item number two, and put it off till Frank and I are on the town council. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. Hello, Fairfax. Once again, we are here in the final meeting time of some of these council members where justice is not prevailing, where things are trying to be snuck past people. It's really incredible, truly, truly amazing that you have items on the consent calendar, which you well know, having served for many years in this town, having taken classes, that the consent calendar is for non-controversial items, yet you continue to refuse to pull items. I'm requesting that you pull items one and two from the consent calendar for public comment, and as Mike Gearinggelli just asked, that item two be put off to a meeting after the new council has assumed office. And I want to make you aware of some parts of the law that you may have forgotten about or may not be aware of. Pardon me while I pull this up for you. Okay, so this is the 2023 California Elections Code, Election Division 18 Penal Provisions, which I won't read all of, but I'm going to read part of it that pertains to council members. Any public official who knowingly violates any of the provisions of Division 18, Chapter 6, and thereby aids in any way to illegal casting or attempting to cast a voter, connives to nullify any of the provisions of that chapter in order that the fraud may be perpetrated, shall forever be disqualified from holding office in the state, and upon conviction, shall be sentenced to state prison for 16 months or two or three years. I'm going to add one more thing here. Yes, a lawyer can be disbarred for advising a client to do an illegal act as it is considered a serious breach of ethical conduct and a violation of professional responsibility rules, which prohibit lawyers from knowingly assisting clients in illegal activities.
Thank you.
I'd like to finish.
No. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. It seems like item two is pretty controversial, and I don't understand why it's even on the consent calendar. This is something that needs to have a presentation done, and it needs to have the input of the community for several months before it even shows up for any type of adoption. You know, you're giving a new meaning to lame ducks. It's quite amazing. As far as three goes, where you're talking about getting rid of the Ford Super Duty bucket truck because we're going to be sharing San Anselmo's, in there, it says that the town manager says, oh, we don't have our public works people hang banners up anymore. Yeah, because you keep contracting it out at five to 10 times the amount that it would cost our own staff to do it. $1,000 the last time. I think we're up there somewhere between $12,000 to $15,000 that you've wasted hanging banners, when it could have been done in-house. You could have rented a little portable escalator, elevator for 90 bucks a day, but no, it's been outsourced at $1,000, $2,000, $4,000. This is how you deal with our money. It's amazing, because when I read your campaign flyers, you were talking about how you just carefully shepherd the funds of our town. Well, I don't call that shepherding the funds of our town wisely. I mean, it really makes you wonder why, especially when you look at the fact that even public works, public works workers who have been here for years and years and years don't even get paid what is considered low wage in Marin County.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mallory Guidheim, Fairfax. I want to agree with everybody who's spoken, and I also want to point out that you pulled a fast one on the town because you want to pass something that most of us do not agree with, and you didn't tell people with enough time that you wanted to do this. And this is an important issue, and the town should know, and maybe it should be part of the regular town council meetings. What you guys are doing is just making rules and making your own rules, and you don't care about what the people, most of the people, do here and say here, and I think it's really unfair. And we have lawyers and the town manager who don't know about Fairfax because they don't live here. And this is a very special town, and you guys are wrecking it.
Next speaker, please.
Deb London. I agree with what Mike McIntosh said. He's absolutely correct. Mike Gearinggelli, you have no business creating number two. That needs to be pulled. This whole meeting is a sham today, and number two needs to be pulled from the agenda. It's a total cock block for Mike and Frank, and...
Please watch your language.
Oh.
Again?
What word?
Profane language. Please stop, Deb.
Well, it's ridiculous. It so blatantly feels illegal, and you should be ashamed of yourselves. You guys need to pull this immediately. And I agree with, well, everybody else who spoke, with Mark Bell. It's just one thing after another after another, and you have a complete pattern of never listening. And I think this latest election really handed it to you, all the way down to Trump being elected. It's too much. You've gone too far, all of you, and you need to pull number two, and you need to resign. Steffi, my friend, my new friend, you need to step down. Barbara, you need to step down. Blash, you need to step down.
Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Doug Kelly. I think we just saw a very strong election here in this town, and for you to have a special meeting right after the election to ensure that the two people who won, first and second, aren't allowed to put things on agenda is not collegiate. It's not working well with others. It's not listening to the town, and I don't think it's going to play out very well.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Frank.
Thank you, Mayor. Frank Eager from the Cascades. Item number three, you're getting rid of the whacker, the compactor. Fairfax no longer does potholing. Our crews used to do hot patches with the compactor. That's how we kept the street safer, but it's obviously Fairfax no longer patches the potholes. So I would recommend that you keep the whacker until you've got a report from your public works director, how is it going to take care of the potholes. I served seven terms as mayor of Fairfax and always honored a request from any council member to place an item on the agenda that they wanted to discuss. Where did this proposal come from? The one that says we need three votes in order to put an item on the agenda? I'm asking you, where did it come from? Is that from you, mayor, or from the council? How did it come about? The, you know, having this on a special meeting with only 24 hours' notice, just a couple of weeks before we get sworn in, is a clear slap in the face to the voters of Fairfax. Obviously, you are rewriting the rules to muzzle council member-elect Michael Gearinggelli and myself. The new rule that we have, the three votes of majority, basically blocks the minority from doing anything, makes it impossible for us to accomplish anything. There were six items on this November election, three council seats, and three ballot measures. You lost five of the six. It's time for real change. Please, please hold off on this agenda item until the new council is seated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank. Are there any more speakers in the room?
Seeing none of those speakers on Zoom. There are five raised hands on Zoom. Okay. The first speaker is Lynn, followed by Dee Lee. Lynn, you are unmuted.
Hi. Boy, I'm telling you, I don't know what you guys are drinking in your water, but something's just gone too far. You know, it used to be wolves and sheep's clothing. Now you guys aren't even wearing the sheep's clothing. You're just all wolves. I mean, I'm so upset. I can't believe, I believe with everything everybody else said, but I think it is a slap in the face in the town council, in our attorney, in our town planner, and it's disgusting. This backroom calculated contrived manipulation is exactly what turns people off politics. Like, you guys know what you're doing. It's so Trumpy. It's so, it's so unnerving. And I have to say, there were certain things I liked about all of you and your characters at certain times while you've been inserting, but now it's just all bad. Like, you guys are so... Obviously, people in this town did not like the way the town was being run, but you guys want to now make it so that no matter what, the other two seats that are taken, that come on, have less power. I mean, it's so blatant. What's happened to your senses? I'm really, I'm like in shock. And to just find out about this? Ooh! I mean, I wish I could look at each of you in the eye and just say, what is going on? Trying to pull a fast one. You know, 25 people I talked to today don't know what's going on here. No notice, too short of notice. You can't digest it. So it's disgusting, disturbing, and again, I feel talking to the hand. It's upsetting. 10 hands. Just talk to the hands, and you guys will do whatever you want to do. It doesn't matter what everybody says. Just, what a way to leave office.
Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Dee Lee, followed by Sierra. Deb, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you, Christine. Thank you, council members, for hearing me, Deborah Benson, Cascades. What in the world are you thinking? I mean, for the past four years, I would say 90% of the votes have been unilateral. There's not been, you know, occasionally, if there's a dissenting vote, but you guys are like a cabal. You're not listening to what happened in the election. You're trying to knock Frank and Mike off at the knees. You're trying to maintain your little personal seats of power. You're like the monkey who puts his hand inside the jar and tries to grab so many nuts that he can't get his hand out again. And beware, you know? People are watching what you're doing. This thing needs to be pulled from the consent calendar. It needs to be discussed. It needs to be discussed in more than a 24-hour notice to the people of Fairfax. I, it's unbelievable that you're not listening, that you're pulling this power play in a last minute, and you are not offering a peaceful transition of power. And I think you should be ashamed of yourselves, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Sierra, right? Sierra, and then Kristin Omly. Sierra, you are unmuted.
There we go. Wow. Interesting world we've created, huh? This is Sierra Tunerfish Monkey Mind Emoji sailing, by the way. Pick whichever one you want. Darn. Wow. You know, I pretty much am in agreement with most everybody that's spoken on most of what they said. You know, that being said, I'd like to see number two get pulled. I don't think it's a good thing to do, like, right after a major election. I'd like to see number three get pulled as well. I wonder why we're selling the bucket truck. I mean, I think it might need some repairs, but I think that's some repairs that we have the skill and the know-how within the town. I mean, I'll help do it if that's what it needs. But I think, you know, we talk about saving money and doing costs in town. That thing's useful. If we're contracting out a whole bunch of money, I think we're better off getting our own or fixing this one rather than contracting out. As for what Frank was saying about the compactor or whatever, it's like, we just lost the bid, which I can't even vote on because I live in the county. I can't vote on all kinds of things in the town because I live in the county. Whoa, whoa. Is that like, you know, not representation or what? Anyway, we'd better patch the holes in our roads in-house and do a lot with it with what little money we do have, so why not, like, have our public works and other people do that work? It's what we did in the past. I mean, a little goes a long way there. You know, if nothing else, there's a pretty big perception problem in terms of what's actually going on. It's like, what you think, what we think, and what's actually going on, I don't know. But there's a big difference between all of that and good luck. There's the bell. Thank you very much. I love that bell.
Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Kristin, followed by Nelson. Kristin, you are unmuted.
Hi, thank you. I want to say that I respect anyone who offers their time and efforts to support their community. At the same time, I have to ask why there is a sudden push to make it more difficult to add items to the town council agenda, and why this is occurring in such a rush without public input. Only agenda items can be voted on. By suddenly deciding to limit which agenda items can be added to the docket seems in opposition to open dialogue and access to affecting town policies that impact the entire community. Many people say to follow the money and see who gains from decisions and legislation. In this case, I think it is critical for our town council members and our staff and our public community to ask who gains by limiting agenda items. To me and many others, it does not seem as if doing this will be beneficial for our town and the people this town council is tasked with representing equitably. The democratic process and eliciting and supporting public comment are critical to a well-functioning community process. I ask that number, item number two also be pulled from the agenda and moved to a time where there is adequate time for discussion and public comment. I have not heard one person in support of item two in today's meeting or from our community during the 24 hours in which this was noticed. Proceeding with this appears to be in direct opposition to the will of the people, and I hope that you all choose to support equitable access and to support the voices of all members of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Nelson, followed by Michael. Nelson, you are unmuted.
Hey, can you guys hear me? My name is Nelson, resident here of Fairfax. I am currently asking you to remove item number two from the agenda. I am very concerned that keeping this item in the agenda for tonight will divide the town farther. I see there is a very clear mandate from the past election, and I currently ask you to listen to the voice of the people. Also in agreement with item number three, I think that should also be removed. I think we should try to do most of the work in-house. My guiding principle here is that, you know, we should be looking at how we're spending our money the same way how you would look to manage your money in your house, right? Property taxes are very expensive. Yes, I think, I don't require further discussion when the new town council comes in. I don't think it's okay for you guys to do this right now after having this election. So thank you for considering this, and I hope that you guys can listen to the voice of the people. I don't come to these meetings often. I listen to them quite a bit, but I think the town is very, very frustrated with how things are being managed right now, so I hope that you guys can listen. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Michael, followed by Kristin Asher. Michael, you are unmuted.
Thank you very much. This is Michael Sexton. I want to agree with everybody who's spoken, both Michael, Mark, Deb, and especially the very sane voice of Kristin who just dialed in. You've gone way past your authority on this. Number two and number three definitely need to be pulled. This is crazy. You're not listening to the important voices of this town, basically the residents. You're not listening. I haven't heard a single person speak in support of this. This is so illustrative of why the two incumbents lost their bids in their campaign. This is crazy. Your actions are insulting to the residents of Fairfax. Don't make this your legacy. I look forward, if you guys vote for this, I look forward to helping to defeat the other two remaining authoritarian town council members. What goes around comes around, and you do not want this type of power, this authoritative, authoritarian type of power, this Trumpian type of power, to be a legacy of this Fairfax council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kristin, followed by Jane. Kristin, you are unmuted.
Hello. I'm calling to agree with most of the people here speaking tonight. We just had an election that went strongly against all of you and your leadership here. The item on the agenda tonight that allows for a three-vote majority to agree on an item, and just before Frank and Mike come on board, is a clear manipulation to keep the remaining three of you in power and for your votes to go through. You are not listening to the people. You are not listening to the people. Often your votes have been unilateral, five to zero over many years. Now the people are aware of your DSA influences and some are wise enough to have voted some of you out. Your inability to listen to citizens is outrageous. It's shocking that we now need to have an investigation. This is crazy. This clearly blocks Mike and Frank's future votes. You, you know, the last five of your six ballot measures were, you know, that you supported were voted, you were voted against. The people have spoken. You're really actually quite humiliating yourselves tonight. And it's an embarrassment that we all have to come here and look at this manipulation that's going on tonight in a special meeting that's not a normal Wednesday meeting. And that we all have to take time out of our day to come and again, call you out on it. And I also was not here earlier in the meeting, so changing a camping overnight ordinance to be no longer a camping overnight ordinance, if that's indeed what you're doing tonight, is outrageous as well.
That's not on consent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. And I just want you guys to look at yourselves in the mirror about what you're doing here to block Frank and Mike. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Jane, followed by Kay. Jane, you are unmuted.
Remedus would like to speak directly after me. We only have the ability to have one hand, so hopefully that'll work. I have to agree with everybody who said everything. I am so shocked. I can't believe it. It's just, I, how stupid do you think we are? That we can't see the, see through what you're doing? I mean, really, people, you are intelligent people, so are we. Well, how could you dare to pull such a fast one? Shame on you. Don't do this. It's bad for you. You're going to look bad forevermore. Take it all off, start over, get rid of this agenda, throw it all out. Let the people speak, let them be heard for once, please. That's why the election went the way it was. People were sick and tired of being shunted off to the side and not listened to. You never did. You play like you're listening to us and our words just go off into the black void. No action is ever taken on them. It's never any mention of anything of the wonderful things that people say. They're very intelligent people in your community who pay attention far more than some of you sometimes, I'm sorry to say. I'm grateful for your service, but please, this is the most egregious disservice you could possibly do to our town, to yourselves, to the, to the public office that you hold. How can you, as someone said, look in the mirror, truly? I, how could you? Shame. My heart is broken. I, it makes me sick. Please, just throw it all out, back off, let the people rule. You're supposed to serve us, not the other way around. I mean, truly, come on. Where is this? What are you? What kind of a secret? Do you have some kind of weird secret cabal or something? Some secret agenda? It sure looks like that and it makes us really angry in case you haven't noticed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Kay, followed by PJ. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi, town council. I'm going to try to get through this. I have to apologize. I'm in deep grief. I know 80% of us are just broken right now. I just got out of the desert to see, and this is about consent. I'm sorry, I'm just apologizing. Please pull number two. Listen, we're all reeling and broken. And read the room, please read the room. Whether you're doing good stuff or not, you are not, you're, this isn't, you're not trusted. We're not trusting you right now. This is a time to stop, regroup. This is not something that has to be jammed through. We're not Newsom. Trump is not coming to Fairfax. We don't need to shut this down through. Let's just stop, take a breath. I'm sorry and thanks. That's all I got to say. Bye.
The next speaker is PJ, followed by Cindy. PJ, you are unmuted.
Thank you. I'm calling primarily about the agenda item on the e-bikes and the response on the grand jury report. I've seen here and in other places reference to that it's difficult for enforcement on actually regulating who can use what class of e-bike. You know, it's more dangerous to have police or somebody else chasing down kids on bikes. What I don't understand is why we can't just use the system we have in place for other motor vehicles. Like you still have to be of age and with a license to drive a car or motorcycle or a moped. And it seems, it seems like a very simple thing to look at is whether or not the bike is going via pedaling or via throttle. I don't understand why bikes that have throttle alone movement are not treated as motorbikes or mopeds. From everything I've researched, it says it's a gray area and people are just deciding not to enforce it because it's a headache, I guess. I don't know. I think for it not to be considered a moped, it should be pedaled, moved primarily, not throttle only. Also want to comment on, I guess, item two, which I don't understand. All of the hubbub over substantively. The rules seem normal. I'm confused as to how majority votes are considered authoritarian, who benefits, I guess, the townspeople because, you know, if the agenda just keeps getting plugged up, it's more staff hours, more attorney hours, which costs the town money. I'm also confused about hearing Trumpian as an insult and yet referring to the election results here as a mandate as if that means they also think that Trump has a mandate to do whatever you want. It's confused.
Thank you, PJ. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Cindy, followed by John. Cindy, you are unmuted.
Hi, thank you. I'm really frustrated this evening. I had a medical procedure today. And I just checked my email a little while ago and realized that there was a special meeting. You know, I feel like this is illegal to actually, I don't see anything that's urgent here that should have been a special meeting on, you know, on a Tuesday night. Anyway, I missed the beginning of the meeting, but of the speakers that I've heard, I have to say I agree with them absolutely. And I think that it's really, it is an insult that you should be calling a special meeting to, to try to sneak in things on a consent calendar and not allow proper discussion for them. And, and try to sneak them in so that you can get them passed improperly. So I just urge you to just stop doing that. I understand with the election, there's going to be some changes in the council. You know, let's move forward from it and let's start doing things properly. This town has seen too much division because of some shenanigans like this and it needs to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is John. John, you are unmuted.
Hi, can you please pull number two from the consent calendar and can you open it up for further discussion with everyone? And maybe do a whole report and more information so we all properly understand it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. There are no more speakers on Zoom. Okay, bringing you back, just one clarification. Again, this is a special meeting. We brought this primarily because we were looking at the anti-camping issue that's been brought to us. There was a huge demonstration in town. And we had other business to deal with. But as far as item three, we do that work in-house. That piece of equipment will cost over $36,000 to fix. And what we've done is entered into a shared agreement with Santa and Selmo. Our staff are trained in using the bucket truck and they install the banners. So the last time you saw money listed, that was staff time. As far as the compactor, it's my understanding that our staff are still doing patches. John Freeman is out there all the time and we don't use that compactor anymore. Is that correct, town manager?
Yes, that's correct.
Yes, so, okay. And so that is the answer there. And I'm just bringing it back. Is there more discussion? Okay, I, I did everyone in the room. You were sitting here, Candace. You couldn't get up during that period. Could you please be quiet? Candace, I, okay, forget it. Just go ahead, Candace, but I saw you here earlier, so I wish you would have stood up sooner.
Thank you, Mayor Kohler. I did come straight from work. And so I got here as fast as I can and I looked at just calling in to instead.
Okay.
Regarding the consent calendar, I think this is a very packed consent calendar for a special meeting. Two weeks after an election and two weeks before a change of council. I appreciate all of your eye contact. Thank you. I appreciate it. I know this is not easy. I know there's a lot of stress and duress and a lot of division and strife in the town. Believe me, I've been feeling it as well, just walking the streets and working in town. I truly believe agenda item, consent calendar item two should be pulled. I don't find this transparent and actually very last minute and something that really should be reconsidered by all of you and I'm imploring or begging, I'll beg you. This is not the first time I've begged all five of you. I do my best not to get up here and be upset or to yell. I've done everything I can in my democratic rights and abilities in the last two years of knowing all of you. I appreciate your work and I know what you do is not easy. And your civic duty and everything else you do. On the other hand, as you've seen by the election and as you've seen by our conversations or anything else we've done, I've tried. And I've tried to help you in how I can and I also know that I've hindered you in other ways. I'm asking you all to seriously consider right now pulling agenda item number two for transparency purposes, for comprehension, for the public and your constituents. It's the right thing to do and I think you all really need to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. Are there two more speakers in the room? I mean, are you standing up because you want to? What? Okay, well, come ahead.
Sam Leuck, Fairfax. I'd like the first comment, I haven't been to one of these meetings in a while, but there's a lot of hyperbole in the room and it's kind of discouraging. Okay? That said, I'm here for this issue, the item number two. And it's clearly perceived by everyone in this room and many people beyond this room to be an important issue for the town. I assume that there's a reason that you've proposed this change in the, in the rules. And I have many questions about, you know, what those reasons are. Or actually, I would like to know what the reasons are. And that's why I'd like you to pull this item tonight. And respect the community by sharing with us the context of this proposed rule change and why you think it's something that's important and beneficial to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And then we've got one more on Zoom and then we're, we're done with consent.
Hi, Ryan O'Neal. I used to be nervous behind this. I used to be twice as nervous when I was sitting where you were sitting as a councilman in this town when this many butts were in seats. The truth of the matter is ego crushes us. And at the end of the day, if you really want to be a leader for your community, these butts in seats remind us it's not about us. And also, I've spent the better part of the last 30 years of my life volunteering for my community in various boards, many with most of you. And at the end of the day, I wanted to share quickly, within a minute and 21 seconds, something I learned recently about myself. As I had struggles and my daughter one time came up to me and said, hey dad, I got this problem. And I said, what do you got? And she said, oh, I have this problem at school. I'm like, oh, it's easy. You do this, this and this. And she just looked at me. She goes, you don't understand. And she ran downstairs. And I'm like, wow, that didn't work. I mean, I love my child. I want to do everything I can for my child. And I'm like, I gotta change. I gotta switch that up. I promised myself the next time my daughter came up and said, dad, I got a problem. And so grateful and lucky that my daughter loved me enough to come tell me that she had a problem. I said, the next time my kid comes up to me and says, I got a problem, I'm going to just listen. And I'm going to try to fix it, not by telling her what I know, but to understand what's going on. What happens here is you are saying your child come to you and say, we have a problem. And if you want to tell us, you know better than us because of special interest or you're smarter than us, you're missing your child's intention. And all I'm trying to say is that it's time to recognize it's not about you, an agenda and progress. It's about slowing down and listening to your child and loving the people that put you there.
Thank you, Ryan. So we have one more speaker on Zoom. There's no more comments in the room. Okay, one more speaker. Thank you. Hillary is the last speaker on Zoom. Hillary, you are unmuted. Hillary, I think you have to unmute yourself.
Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm just in agreement with most of the voices here tonight. And I would like to ask that number two be removed from the consent calendar so that the community could understand why this is a benefit to the town. It seems like it would be tying the hands of two members that were just elected and it doesn't seem to represent the constituents that you're supposed to be serving. So that's my two cents. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, bringing it back to the council.
I just wanted to note that we have actually talked with the campers several times. And so I just want to put that out there because somebody said that we had not about this meeting and invited them to come tonight. So that's one thing that I wanted to note. Thank you.
Does someone want to explain number two?
What's that?
Does someone want to explain item number two? Like whoever recommended it, does someone want to explain why it's on the agenda?
I actually would like to make.
Well, wait a minute, council member. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead.
For some time, staff has been working on a policies, procedures and rules manual. And we consider it to be a living document that's going to be revised repeatedly over time, adding more things to it. But this is very common to have a rules and procedures manual for councils throughout the Bay Area, certainly, and throughout California, actually. And it's meant to write down, you know, make sure that everybody knows what the rules are. And it's not meant to change anything. It's meant to reflect the current.
Could you make her speak? Deb, please be quiet.
It's meant to reflect the current practices. I will point out, it can be changed upon a majority vote at any point in time if the practice has changed. But some of the things are inclusion of particular laws that have to be followed. Other things are procedures that we have in place already. Don't, I'm unaware actually of anything that is changed or new or different. It's simply an attempt to put in writing the practices that are followed currently and are not in writing. And that if, if councils, future councils, this council want to change them in the future, that is certainly something you can do. It's a resolution. It takes one reading and a majority vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Council, could you please be quiet or leave the room? Councilmember Ackerman, did you want to speak?
So.
So, hearing the public comment tonight, but also just reading this, and I was not aware of this until the packet came out. But I don't see, I agree with what our council has said, that it doesn't really change anything substantially from what we're doing. But I do think that, and I'm speaking as a person who's not going to be on council after next month, but I think that it's probably in the best interest for the town if this doesn't go forward tonight, or at least that it be pulled from consent.
Please be quiet. Let him finish speaking.
I will make a motion to remove it from consent tonight. And then, if council, if that motion passes, then it can be removed from consent. And at that point, it's possible that council could, that this council could decide to continue it or to discuss it. But in any case, I think it's appropriate that it not be on consent. So, that's a motion.
Okay. Excuse me, please be quiet. Councilmember Hellman?
Yeah, I'll second the motion with the comment that when I read it, I didn't, I'll just echo what Janet said, I didn't see anything that constituted a change. For example, when, at the end of our regular meetings, we have an agenda item that says future agenda items and we discuss, we have to get a majority to concur that with somebody raises a future agenda item, we have to get a majority. And we captured that in a, like a strategic planning offsite a couple of years ago because that wasn't clear what the process was to get a future agenda topic. And I think I even raised it. So, just to reiterate what Janet said, this was, it sounds like this was an attempt to capture a pattern of practice, other policies and state rules and Brown Act, et cetera. But I do hear what the community's saying. I do understand how it looks and how it's being perceived and how it's making people uncomfortable, but, so I don't know that it'll change anything if we pull it.
Okay, so, please, okay, we don't need people yelling from the room. Town Manager Abrams, could you, and then we'll take a vote on that. Did you want to speak?
I just wanted to clarify what Councilmember Hellman said is correct. And on May 1st of this year, the council adopted its goals. And a goal that was in that document under strengthening the town organization was creating a Boards and Commissions Training Manual. And this is a portion of that larger document that I had drafted and then Janet had, I would say condensed or simplified to make it ready for tonight's meeting.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second to pull Item 2. Can we do a roll call vote on just pulling it? And I would suggest that if we pull it, we can move it to the very end of the agenda, which is our practice. And if we have time, we'll get to it tonight. But please, okay, you need to be quiet. We listen to you. You know, you need to be quiet.
We need to take a vote.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilmember Ackerman.
You have to make the vote. If you, you made the motion already.
Well, I couldn't hear with all the yelling, so you.
Councilmember Ackerman. Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Catrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes, okay. So, let's go on to take a vote on the rest. Please be quiet.
You could also.
Okay, we need to take a break, five minute break. Okay, could folks take their seats, please? We have we have to vote on the rest of the consent calendar. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move the rest of the consent calendar second. With the errata. Oh, sorry. Take it back.
Okay, so, we had Councilmember Catrano first and second, was that you?
It was Ackerman.
Ackerman.
It was Councilmember Ackerman. Could you do, could you please be quiet in the room or take it outside? Could you do a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Catrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay, so, we're moving on to Item 6, which is, sorry, I need to just reorder things a little bit. So, this is yeah, I got it. Thank you. So, this is, excuse me, you folks. We're on Item 6 and this is Introduction of an Ordinance Repealing Town Code, Section 12.36.020, nighttime use, permission of town clerk or designee required, and Section 12.36.030, nighttime use, grant of permission, conditions, construction and adding Chapter 9.30, camping on public property to Title IX, Public Peace, Morals and Welfare of the Town Code. And I'm not sure who's doing the staff report.
Mayor, I'll start. Well, we were just talking about who would do what. And so, according to rules, I will do big picture based on what the council has asked for. And then Janet will get into the specifics of the legal document, answer any questions that you have. So, and Christine has the PowerPoint up, so thank you. I'll go right into the next slide on this item. So, before you tonight, you have a first reading of an ordinance which does two main things. First repeals an outdated code that attempts to prohibit park use after dark. And then adds an anti camping code. So, this has, for example, specific definitions that are going to be very necessary for implementation. So, second slide, please, or third slide. So, next steps, should you, should you approve tonight, would be the second reading and adoption of this ordinance on December 4th. That is a regular meeting and it is required that ordinances be adopted at a regular meeting. And then, and there are always two readings, as you know. We would continue to work with the County Humans, Health and Human Services Department and Gary Najer Reese, who we've heard from before, who is the homelessness program director, I believe is on the Zoom if we have specific questions about their program and all of the nonprofits that they work with that have been supporting efforts here in town and have housed a couple of people so far. And then, and there, we have been working with them as well as the police department and the Marin Electeds Group, the MCC, MC Committee on Homelessness. So, all of that would continue because it is anticipated that this is, the ordinance is not the end all be all. The ordinance is really about preventing camping in Fairfax, but it doesn't really address housing people. So, those programs are needed for that. And then, in terms of implementation, you know, that is a role that is done by staff who are trained and understand that, you know, risks that are involved. So, that includes the police department, DPW, et cetera. So, staff would coordinate signs and notices that are required under this ordinance. They, we would be seeking a contractor to perform safe and orderly removal of materials and proper storage so that people could retrieve their materials if needed. And then, we would repeat that process as many times as needed for cleanup of various encampments. So, right now, there's an encampment behind the pavilion. And it's possible, as we've seen in other jurisdictions, that if that is removed, an encampment could pop up somewhere else in town. We've seen that before. Next slide, please. In turn, you asked about expenses and I gave some information in the last staff report about this. But those expenses are difficult for us to put exact numbers to right now because there would be additional labor in terms of the police department, DPW, that contractor who would clear and store materials. And then, of course, the production of the notices and signs. And then, we just don't know how many times we would perform that function in a year, for example. So, with that, I will turn it over to anything you might want to add, Janet, or any questions from the council.
Let me put, there is one correction at the very end on the posting. The three places where this will be posted are Town Hall, Women's Club and the Fairfax Post Office. And I'd also like to say that I believe my charge was to draft an ordinance that is as legally defensible as possible, and I believe I have done that. You, there is some question as to why I also included repealing two different sections of the existing code, 12.36.020 and 12.36.030. That's the ones where you can have nighttime camping or sleeping over with the permission of the town clerk, which is unusual, to put it mildly. But I also think that there is potential for conflict with, between those and this anti camping ordinance. And I want to make sure there's no conflict there. So, that's why I am strongly recommending we repeal those two sections and then basically substitute in this anti camping ordinance, 9.30, a new chapter. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions of staff? Councilmember Catrano?
Two quick questions. One, thank you so much for bringing this and shortly after the last meeting. Much appreciated. And I think it's clear when you look at the ordinance language, the definitions and all of that actually clarifies a lot of things, which ultimately is helpful. Two things that were still unclear. One, as far as any signage, anti camping signage that goes on public property or in town parks. What, there were some concerns that all of a sudden there would be signs everywhere or something like that. What's the best practice for posting those sorts of rules in a way that makes sure everybody knows, but also you don't have an overabundance of the signs?
My, in reading this, my anticipation is that we would place signs strategically, like for example, in the entrance to parks where we already have signs or in areas that we know there's camping. And we know that public areas are pretty, you know, there's a lot of various public areas. There are public areas under my office, for example, and I don't anticipate putting signs everywhere. But we could place signs as needed as well and then the notices would follow.
Great. And then, one other question about the where. One of the other things that we've heard about, and I think we've seen play out in other communities that maybe are sweeping quickly an encampment or something like that, is not taking care of people's possessions and the damaging or the destroying of possessions when, you know, we heard in, or read, I guess, in some of the comments before this meeting that there are people who need to go meet with their case manager or need to go buy groceries or do something else. And if they leave their stuff undetended for a period of time, there are issues with them losing potential, potentially their documentation that would help them get into housing. And I'm curious what our process is as far as the storing of those materials. I think it's great that we call out the processes we do intend to utilize to take good care of people's possessions for a period of time if they have to be relocated or if we have to, you know, take those possessions. But where would we store that stuff? Do we have a plan for where that would be?
Yes, so, if you remember when we had a fire at the camp a little while ago and we actually rented a storage container and then material, unless it was clearly hazardous or something that was subject to rot, we would document that and put that in the storage container and then allow people to come and get their belongings. And so, so there's first one is, correct me if I'm wrong, but 72 hour notice beforehand. So, if you were out of, you know, case meeting or something like that, hopefully you would still have ample time to see that notice. And then, secondly, once the material was collected, it would be documented and it's all contained within the ordinance. It would be documented, stored. I believe, again, that's 30 days. And then, people would have an opportunity to come and collect their belongings. So, this ordinance attempts to make that process as humane as possible.
So, in the event, say, say that there's resolution of the current encampment and say, somebody shows up in six months or a year. I mean, there's lots of transience through this whole, you know, around the Fairfax Festival. A couple of people come in and stay a little longer than anyone expects. Would we, A, give this notice, but B, even if it's one new person that shows up, we would basically get a whole storage container unit? Or are there small, like are there more? Because that was, I mean, that was quite a thing that we undertook last year in order to set that up there for a period of time. So, I'm just trying to get a sense of the scope and scale in the future, too.
Yeah, well, the good thing about a rented storage container is that there's some flexibility there. If we find that we need storage ongoing, then I suppose we could purchase a storage container or two as needed. But my anticipation is that we would have, say, one cleanup event. And then, like you said, it is typical for people to come through and we may need to bring that container back or bring a smaller container back. We really don't have extra storage facilities currently within the town. So, we would need to, you know, have some storage facility. But it's, I don't think a huge, I mean, I don't think we're building a storage building. We're talking about a container or two.
Yeah, and it sounds like you can get containers of different, varying sizes essentially, depending on the circumstances. So, and it would be presumably around that pavilion area or the corp yard or somewhere in that kind of locale is where a container would be placed. Is that right?
Yeah, that's my anticipation. We did that before. And then, the material that was in there, you know, it had a sign on it. There were notices in the area of the encampment. And then, people came to the front desk, the dispatch and said, you know, I need to pick something up. And then, they were taken over there and the container was unlocked and their materials were brought out.
Cool. Thank you. That's helpful to get a bigger picture of it.
Thanks. I think as currently written, it contemplates 30 day storage. So, I don't think, I don't know what's going to happen with this, but I don't think there was a plan to keep things for a year or six months. Is that correct?
That's correct. So, 30 day storage, but there, I don't know, but it's true, you know, Councilmember Katrana was pointing out is that there may be, you know, someone new shows up, or someone that their materials are being stored, but they're not housed, they may, you know, pop up in another location.
Okay, and just to clarify, that wasn't the same location that, the area that was burned was when the encampment was in Perry Park proper, correct? And then the folks moved near the pavilion?
No, they were not in Perry Park proper, although there's no real definition of Perry Park proper. They were more towards the creek and more behind the corporation yard, and as, from the back, the corporation yard and the pavilion are quite close.
Okay, thank you. All right. Vice Mayor Blash had her hand up next, and then you'll be next.
Go with Councilmember Hellman first.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question about the 72 hours and the 30-day. So the 30-day, will we send, are we going to have their phone numbers to send a reminder? Anything, any, yeah, that just, it kind of concerned me that.
Yeah, so in the, we would be putting the 72-hour notice on, say, for example, a person's tent, right? So they would have that, and that would have contact information after such date, if your items are still here, they will be stored, here's how you would retrieve them. So I think-
But you have their identity captured to, I mean-
I don't, I can't promise that we'll be able to capture people's identity. We certainly will attempt to make sure that people have access to their belongings.
Okay, so you pin notices to the tents or what have you?
Yes.
And if they're there, you have conversations about, with the 72-hour notice. If they're not there to explain the 72-hour notice and the whole thing, the notice is left. If they're still gone, the property is removed, stored, and then, let's say they come back two weeks later. Where's my stuff? They go to Town Hall, and they just have to describe their possessions, or how do they?
They might. So we'll be, you know, cataloging, photographing, and tagging materials, so that, that's the process. And also, this is not occurring in isolation, right? So throughout now and any clearing activity that we would do, we're also working with county HHS to, you know, get services in, make sure that people are aware. The current folks who are there have been there, you know, for a while, for the most part.
Right.
I understand there may be one newer person, but since PD is visiting that site at least once a day, there's some familiarity, and there can be some discussion of, oh, you know, what was yours? Where is it? Let me, you know, help you get into that storage container. So I feel fairly confident that people who want to retrieve their materials will be able to. And also, one thing about the 72-hour notice is it is an attempt to allow people to orderly remove their own things and hopefully store them in a place that they feel comfortable with. So that removal and storage by the town is really the last resort.
Right. And will there be an effort to help them separate what they don't want to keep and what we can dispose of? Because I don't, if we don't have to hang on to things that they don't want to hang on to, we shouldn't, and if they consider it disposable.
Yeah. Yeah, so there are guidelines within the, within the ordinance, and then other, one other thing that I like to mention is that since our staff has been, you know, interacting with folks who are staying behind the pavilion right now, we have already set a, you know, a system where they're really encouraged to bring garbage in bags out to that location, and then our staff disposes of that. So that's something that we've been doing to try to, you know, assist them in keeping that area clean and removing things that they don't need to store.
Okay. And the 72-two hours is a standard that, okay, that HHS, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Just wanted to ask a couple questions. So, you know, this came up with various people, and I asked it too, which is why, you know, San Rafael adopted an ordinance that says, you know, you can't camp X yards from a creek or X yards from a school, or here, there, or the other place. Nevada has a different ordinance that was pretty restrictive in terms of specifying places people could or couldn't camp, and then eventually they tried to adopt one that said that you can only camp if you're involuntarily unhoused. And I'm just curious why neither of those models works for Fairfax?
Well, I didn't look specifically for what would necessarily, quote-unquote, work for Fairfax. What I looked for was what was legally defensible, most likely to be legally defensible. And anytime you have any kind of a question about, are they actually in the park? Are they not in the park? Are they just off the park? You know, where are they located? Is this, is this within the grounds or the boundaries of where the ordinance covers? That creates uncertainty. Anytime you have to question somebody about if they're involuntarily homeless, offering them shelter if such is available, and they refuse it, and then they can be subject to the ordinance, that also is a point where there can be confusion, and there can be misunderstandings, and it creates another opening or a hole in what would otherwise be something that is legally defensible. So I'm just trying to eliminate any sort of avenues into challenge the ordinance, and I'm trying to make it as simple and as clear, providing all of the requirements from current case law, and hoping that that, you know, creates a strong ordinance that will be more likely than not legally defensible.
Okay. And I'm wondering if we have questions of Gary? Is now the time to ask, or when we're in deliberation?
Now, I'm sorry? Now's the time to ask questions?
I will, I will ask Christine if she sees him raising his hand.
Gary's online.
Okay. So I think now would be fine.
Okay. So we might want to introduce, that's Gary Nahar Reese, who's the director of Whole Person Care for the County of Marin, and he's the person that we've been working with all along, and he's on the line. So Gary, I just wanted to check on a couple of things. If indeed such an ordinance were passed, there's a couple of questions. First off, I know we have at least one person who's on a housing pathway. I don't know if there's any guarantee of when that person would be receiving a housing voucher or moving on to housing, so I don't know if you can answer that. And then the second question for now is, you know, how long typically do you think is fair to give people to get prepared to try to find somewhere else to be?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the questions. Before I answer those, I just want to appreciate the efforts of the Fairfax Police Department, your council members who have interacted with the individuals in the encampment, and your city staff, who have all been extraordinarily supportive of helping folks move towards a permanent housing destination. In response to your questions, so I think evidence-based practice indicates that management and structured resolution of encampments, similar to the way that the Encampment Resolution Fund grants are structured with the State of California, is the most humane and successful pathway to resolving encampments. The State of California, through the Encampment Resolution Fund, currently sets a 36-month clock on those grants to be able to resolve encampments. These are usually much larger encampments, you know, upwards of 50, 100 individuals. So for smaller encampments, I don't think it will take that long. I think, as we've seen previously, two individuals have been housed from that encampment. You previously had two individuals in housing-based case management. We were able to add two others into that program. Since then, two of those individuals have moved on from the encampment. I think the primary issue that you're seeing now is the challenge of managing new arrivals in that situation, and there are certainly lots of, you know, there are lots of excellent strategies that you have already implemented, like regular trash cleanups and pickups, interactions, and, you know, positive relationships with law enforcements and others, and certainly the regular outreach and case management services, both routine visits and on-demand visits that are provided to the encampment by providers under contract with HHS. I think that, you know, with a, with any encampment resolution, I think you have to look at a fair time period of the reality of what it takes to move individuals on a housing pathway. I'll give you an example, you know, with the Encampment Resolution Fund grant at Binford, you know, we originally started last August with upwards of 132 individuals in that encampment. One year later, there are now 60, and that's a combination of a couple of things happening. One, us connecting about half of those individuals to a permanent housing destination. The other is that when an encampment is in process of being resolved and individuals are expected to engage in services, we see some individuals do decide to choose to leave on their own and relocate. So unfortunately, you know, the way that vouchers and other services, currently, there are no vouchers available for individuals. The Marin Housing Authority is in something that's called voucher shortfall, which happens occasionally. It means that all available vouchers and funds have been expended. We don't expect there to be some additional vouchers available until at least the beginning of the new year. However, there are other mechanisms for helping people move, including family reunification, temporary rental supports, or other strategies that might match the individual circumstances of the person.
Okay, so in terms of like temporary rental support, family reunification, are these things that are already being addressed by, you know, the outreach workers or the case managers, or is that something above and beyond that would come with encampment resolution funds?
So one of the things that outreach workers and outreach workers often do, and housing case managers always do, is work with clients to identify what their desired permanent housing destination is. So for the individuals who are currently being case managed, that's something that's been discussed and identified with them. That's something that they are working towards, whether that be living independently in the community or other options. For folks who are not in housing-based case management, our teams have those conversations, but it's a different, you know, set of resources and supports that are available. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, and then the final one is, you know, we have had it suggested to us that we specify a date that we are going to close the encampment and offer the people camping there, you know, possible priority or something for a shelter placement. Is that a strategy that people use or use with success?
So unfortunately, the way that the system works, and this is based in fair housing law, and, you know, under our, under federal HUD regulations, what it says is that you cannot prioritize individuals by race, sex, gender, sexual orientation, or geographic location. So with, with our countywide system, that system functions based on the highest vulnerability. So individuals are assessed and entered into a system called coordinated entry, and resources are assigned based on the vulnerability of individuals, which can vary greatly. Individuals in encampments are not, are sometimes some of the most vulnerable individuals, but not always. What we could do is something creative, you know, here locally in Marin. One of the reasons why the Encampment Resolution Fund grants are so successful is because they operate in parallel to that HUD system. They are funded by State of California money, so they don't need, so they can focus on a geographic location. They don't need to adhere to those same guidelines. So what we could do with local funding and resources, either from the county municipalities like yourselves or other local sources, is we can come up with a mirror encampment resolution, you know, type program approach to assist individuals in the, in the encampment in Fairfax. It would basically be kind of like grandfathering in, you know, the folks who are there currently, but putting them on a clock and matching resources and priorities to help. It is unlikely that those resources or supports would be successful in a 90-day timeframe, though.
Thank you.
So Gary, I have a couple of questions. I was kind of thinking along some of the lines that Vice Mayor Blash was. While you can't, with federal dollars, prioritize people by geographics, could you, for example, prioritize people for shelter beds? So it's my information, I don't know if it's accurate, that there's 144 shelter beds in the county. And is there any way of prioritizing? So let's say we set a clock where no more people can come in, so a complete change here. You know, this is the finite number, is what's there now, and you set a clock for three months, six months from now, to get people either in housing or shelter beds. Is there some way that the county could help prioritize at least the shelter beds?
So when shelter, there's approximately 161-
161?
Yeah, shelter beds in the county in various configurations. The, we run, we operate what's known as a housing-focused shelter system, which means that, so the difference is, it's not just an overnight shelter, like, people don't just come in for one night, or a few days, or stay for a week. That once someone enters our shelter system, they are committed to the staff there work, you know, the same way our housing-based case managers would work with individuals to assure that when they leave the shelter, it's to a permanent housing destination and not back to the streets. So given that, there's relatively low turnover in the number of available beds at our shelter and on any given week. The shelters, the Homeward Bound opens its available shelter slots normally on Mondays. Sometimes that can be as few as three or four openings, and sometimes there can be upwards of, excuse me, 40 to 60 people who are trying to compete for that small number of slots. But all that being said, Homeward Bound has been an excellent partner in this work, in helping to resolve encampments and assist municipalities. So although we couldn't specifically put beds aside specifically for Fairfax individuals, we could work with Homeward Bound to talk with them about how best, you know, to advance folks towards available shelter slots. So we would be committed to, you know, working in partnership with the town as well as, you know, with our partners to figure out what is possible.
Okay, so not inability to necessarily prioritize the five or so people that are in our current encampment for even shelter beds, but potentially, there would be some ability to work with Homeward Bound, because it is a small group, to maybe, maybe not call it priority, but be able to kind of set a time clock and no more people can come in, because that's one of the things that's happened. We had folks, then those folks moved on, other folks moved in, and so it's a continual cycle. So, you know, what you said when you talked about working with Homeward Bound, I'm not- So i- you know, what you said when you talked about working with Homeward Bound, I'm not sure what that means. Could you clarify that a little bit, Gary?
Sure. Um, again, using factors around vulnerability as well as the client's commitment to entering shelter and committing, you know, to working on a permanent housing destination. I think although slots open up, and as I was saying, there's there's only a few of them, we do want to look at how motivated clients are to be doing the work as well as connecting to the service and maximizing the use of that service. And so, you know, one thing that is taken in, uh that that's taken in, you know, can be taken into account. Um, and we can work with our partners at Homeward Bound to, you know, to uh, you know, discuss with them in advance if we have an individual or two identified in the encampment that are highly motivated and would like to move to a shelter option and and begin doing that work um to find ways to, you know, facilitate them getting in as quickly as possible.
Okay, and and not to violate any privacy laws, do we have folks that are currently in the encampment that appear very motivated to go down that path?
Um, so I would say that, you know, in our experience, all of the individuals in the encampment are motivated to resolve their homelessness at some point. Um, it's just uh one of the things that it's important to remember about folks, you know, who are homeless is the trauma that they've experienced prior to becoming homeless and the trauma they continue to experience while homeless, including folks trying to take advantage of them, you know, while they're on the street in various ways, make promises that 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 can't be kept, um, promise services that don't deliver, et cetera. It takes, you know, an extraordinary skill and and uh set of circumstances to engage and build that trust. And I think that's one of the things that takes the most time in trying to resolve these encampments is to help folks move. So you may hear individuals in the encampment say things like, no, you know, I I want to live, you know, outdoors. I'm not interested in anything. But, you know, when you can have and invest the time to build trust um and build a relationship with that individual, um, we're, what we often see is that, you know, to a fault, you know, every individual does want to be connected to something safe and permanent. So, you know, I would say from from what I've learned about of the clients there, everyone is invested um in ultimately finding a permanent housing destination. Um, but it requires trust um and persistence, you know, from a set of qualified um, you know, providers to be able to get to that point, and that's what we're committed to assisting Fairfax with.
And so just one more question, and then I'll stop. Um, I think we have some folks in town that generally want to help the folks in the encampment, but what you just mentioned is um, we really need trained staff because even though good intentions may seem like the right approach to members of the public, that can also be very confusing. And I think you mentioned that it, people can be promising services that may or may not exist. So I guess you found that it's best to really leave this to the professionals, right?
Correct. Um, you know, I can say that we've heard from a number of folks in the encampment that they've experienced a variety of types of interactions with individuals while being in Fairfax. Not to say necessarily that the individuals that they interacted with were from Fairfax, but um, but while they were, you know, at the encampment, they have experienced a variety of interactions with the public, some uh which have been threatening, you know, and menacing, others which have been trying to pose as, you know, outreach workers or other supportive um folks. And the clients have shared with us that that really impairs their ability to trust and move forward, um, because they feel like too many folks are talking with them, promising them different things, those things are not coming to fruition. And if that becomes their continued and repeated experience, then as we try to work with them, they that same uh challenge of needing to rebuild trust exists with our professional staff as well. And so, you know, at this point, I can confidently say I've received at least um, you know, two to three complaints, you know, from individuals in the encampment who have said that they are confused as to why um members of the public have approached them, you know, promising services and supports um and uh are not sure what to do. And when clients get put in that position, that hesitation can cause them to not take advantage of opportunities that are actually in front of them.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Um, does anybody else have questions of staff or Gary? Um, okay, so this item is, um, I guess we're going to move to public comment, and this is on the ordinance specifically. Um, and then we'll bring it back. So first speaker, is that Robbie? Uh, you need to press the button?
No, thank you.
And just maybe introduce yourself again?
Yeah, my name is Robbie Paus. This is my first Fairfax Town Council meeting.
Hey.
I am, whoa.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Yeah, I am amazed at the energy. It is chaos in the town of Fairfax. I could tell, I could tell there is chaos and disorder. Um, it is palpable in these chambers today. So today, the ordinance as before you is not a solution as draconian. People will be perpetually guilty of biological necessities and taking precautions to keep themselves safe. And as has been uh shown in San Rafael and Nevada, people need to be able to be safe. And right now, you have it on the record. These, these people are being threatened by people in the town of Fairfax. It's pandemonium. My God, they had a protest. I saw it. And I'm telling you, the big, the people who are losing the most are the children. I s- I saw.
Robbie, Robbie, you need to direct your comments to the council.
I know there's important people all around me. So all I want to say is that I saw those kids protesting the encampment, and my heart broke that there are parents in this town indoctrinating their kids in hatred because that is the cleanest fucking camp. That is a nice camp. Fairfax got the nicest camp.
Um, for family.
I apologize. I apologize. But I just want to say it's a nice camp up there. Good, decent people, very reasonable. I just saw pictures of them doing a camp cleanup with with the gentleman named Mr. Gearinggelli. And they're reasonable people up there, working on solutions. But this ordinance is not a solution. This ordinance is going to criminalize everybody in this town that doesn't have a place to stay. That is not a solution, and our children deserve better because we are indoctrinated and with hatred towards the people that have the least. Can someone say amen?
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Is that uh Jason?
Yeah, Jason, uh, is this still on? Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jason, um, I am co-chair of the Marin County Lived Experience Advisory Board. You know, a couple of things I'll be talking about, Gary already touched on, Gary Najal Reese. I want to start off this comment by saying there are only two shelters in Marin County, to- that total roughly a hundred and sixty beds. In this year's HUD point in time count, there is a thousand and ninety unhoused people tallied in Marin County, which means that only eleven percent of the unhoused population can even get into a shelter on any given night. Um, with shelters perpetually full, save for a couple of beds a week, the fact is there will be over nine hundred people without a shelter or a home every day and night. There is a need for unhoused residents to be have a safe place to sleep in the town of Fairfax because of the lack of shelter beds. Nevada, San Rafael, the county, and even Sausalito for a brief time have come to this realization. They all have established camps, and they're for the, they're there for the sole reason to permanently get people off the streets and into a home. And it's working. The statistics prove it. Looking at this proposed camping ordinance, anyone who lives outside without a home cannot even go to sleep in the town of Fairfax without the fear of persecution or punitive fines. This very act, the very act of sleeping will now be considered a crime. I mean, you guys are going to ban sleeping, a biological need. I'm extremely disappointed and quite frankly disturbed that members of the town council, who I have known to be champions of human rights, might pass this ordinance and ban the mere act of sleeping. There is a solution out there that will keep all the residents of Fairfax safe. The town council just needs to uh find the political will and moral will to find it. Please vote no on the camping ordinance.
Thank you, Jason. Next speaker, please.
It's important you not listen to outside voices from outside of Fairfax that failed miserably during the time of.
Okay, Sean, stop the clock. Sean, um, the person behind you doesn't live here. People are allowed to speak here, so they can come from outside. I'm just, you know, let's just keep your comments to the ordinance, please.
I think it's my turn to comment, I thought, right?
I asked her to stop the clock so I could just say, people from outside can speak here.
I didn't say they can't.
You started to say no. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, please. Go ahead.
I thought that's what this moment was for. Can you start it back at two? You completely derailed me. Please let me speak. Start it back at two.
Go ahead.
It's important in establishing an ordinance that you're not listening to outside voices like you did with the rent control that failed miserably. It's important that you listen to Fairfax voices in the establishment of our town ordinances. Has nothing to do with homelessness. I'm talking about our town ordinances coming from our town voices. Heather mentioned that they have a clean, orderly trash pickup schedule. I would challenge that. I have documented this on Nextdoor. The trash is there every day. It's not in an orderly manner. It's scattered everywhere. We went up there, offered them a meal to help clean up what was months of accumulation of trash, and it's still all over the back of the fence. These people just need an encouragement to do it and a reason to do it. That wasn't because of the city. That was because citizens. Another person's been there for over seven months and doesn't have an ID or a tent. They only just recently got a tent, and a citizen helped them get an ID because without, they couldn't even get into a shelter. The care services you say they're going two to three times per week go once on Thursday together. It is one combined visit. I watched the visit. They were in and out of the camp in under three minutes. They said, care visit, ritter van, everyone good? Okay, and that's it. They're not encouraging people towards a better life to get out of there. Four of them came from Sausalito within the last year. Most of them have not started coordinated entry. They're not on a housing path. They do not want to be housed, some of them. They prefer outdoor. They tell us they're nervous about being inside. They don't want to be alone. There's reasons why they don't want to. We do not have coordinated services that are working with these people to establish trust like Gary says they need, and they've been there for over a year, some of them. But you guys say this is important for them to establish this trust, and it's going to take six months. Why haven't you started on that?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Uh, firstly, I'd like to start with, because I have spoken to all the campers, and they have continually said how polite and considerate the Fairfax Police Department is and how much they respect that, especially in comparison of how they've been treated elsewhere. So thank you. Two, your statements up here that they don't want to be harassed by citizens, I've heard the exact opposite. All they want to do is to be seen as individuals, just like all of us. They'd like to have that same respect that when you walk down the street, you say hello instead of look at the ground. Specifically, I remember the very first time that I met Barbara Coler. There is a special meeting pertaining to Victory Village that was held in the Planning Department in two thousand and thirteen. At that time, you came out, and honestly, you're acting the same way then as you act now. But when you came out of that meeting so rudely to me, and I tried to ask about it, and you didn't want to disclose the purpose of the meeting, I specifically brought up that the reason that the take, excuse me, the taking of HUD money for Victory Village would fail is because it precludes us from giving and extending that housing to our local community. You asked what I would do, and I said, if you brought forth a redevelopment agency and you said, Brown, shut those down. Incorrect. He financially gutted them. I said, you could also file or form a BID, a Business Improvement District, so that we, the citizens of Fairfax, could keep the incremental tax difference from the base of what it is to the improved value, and we could allocate those funds to protect our community, those people most vulnerable that need housing, our unhoused as well as our seniors. I don't see this council doing anything. I appreciate efforts, virtue signaling, but I have been up there, and they would like to be seen. And the whole due process that you talk about requires, and it says in your new little ordinance, that anybody who's going to be materially affected by your decisions must have at least on special meetings, twenty-four hour notice. I went there before the meeting, and you did not advise them of this thing. You're out of due process of your own orders.
Doug?
Good evening, Doug Kelly. Um, a couple of things. Under uh nine dot three oh dot dot zero two oh definitions, you don't de- define what overnight means. I would suggest you could put in something saying half an hour bef- after sunrise, sunset, until a half an hour before sunrise, and then it's up to the park user to be aware when those times are. Uh, the other thing is, it says under nine dot thirty dot oh five oh unauthorized encampments, under D, number two, in any sp- open space, waterway, or banks of a waterway. Great. Number four, in any park where it is determined that there's a substantial public health, safety, and welfare risk, and provided that signs are posted, private encamping, that are clearly visible. I'll just move that to in any, in any park. But why do we have to determine? Who's going to determine that? It just seems like you just put, do it like you did number two. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. I'm personally impacted by your lack of action. And I'm wondering why you haven't taken action for two or three years while you've known about it. Brings up a lot of questions. When I try to rifle through these, since you limit my time and all of our time, and we're all impacted negatively by it. First off, one of the things I learned that I think any business person learns and people seek to teach their kids that I'm going to share with you, which you don't seem to have learned, is to set a time limit on things, on actions, and to set priorities, which I've spoken to you about before. And a really easy way to understand it is, by when? By when are you going to solve this problem that you created? I'm glad we're having a discussion about it tonight, but you need to think about when you're going to do certain actions and how you're going to do them, whether it's just up to this town attorney or whether she's going to consult with other town attorneys and try to save the town money by not coming up with something on her own. Now, with the remaining time, I talked about, one, other town city attorneys, were they consulted? Two, adequate notice, Councilman Cuttrono brought up. Are we going to play whack-a-mole as a town manager? Talked about doing my paraphrase, where we're just going to put up signs all the time? Well, now we put up a sign. I think that's problematic. One of the things that anyone who takes a criminal law course will learn is that there's elements to a crime, and there has to be proper notice. Those elements have to be met, not in an arbitrary fashion. This attorney may be a public agency law attorney, and he may or may not be good, but.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mark Bell, Fairfax. Uh, for uh Attorney Coulson. The California Supreme Court has made it clear that opinions of all courts of appeal in the state are binding on every trial level court, regardless of which district court of appeals the trial court is located, which means that you're violating the Brown Act by not giving people three minutes to speak. Why is there some type of conflict with the old ordinances and the potential of the new one? Why do you need to repeal it? When is the new one going to go into effect? Are we looking at a two-week, two-month, three-month gap with nothing? If we repeal what exists, and they're not outdated, they're just not enforced. There's nothing wrong with the ordinance, except that the attorney didn't write it. Ka-ching. Section nine thirty point zero six oh should read seventy-two, seventy-two hours maximum, not seventy-two hours minimum. If you want to end an encampment, you need to give a specific time when they have to be gone. You're saying, well, you know, you can't, you can't even leave for seventy-two hours, is what you're saying in that section. in that section. I mean, come on. Who wrote this? And the other thing is considering the cost of ordinances in the past that have been indefensible, such as the smart meter, which costs us at least an additional $150,000 in legal fees, which when PGE announced that they were going to put in smart meters, all of a sudden, the ordinance was, "Oh, we can't defend this." Well, you wrote it. Hundred fifty thousand. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mallory Guadheim, Fairfax. We're talking a lot about the homeless people, but what about the people who live here? What about the people whose kids can't play in the creek because of the shit? Okay, why are we spending so much time figuring that out without also figuring out what people who live here have to do to get their park back, to get their kids to a safe place in the creek? Because you're forgetting there's, yes, I agree that people need help. Then help them, but also help us, because we need that kind of help as well, and as do our kids. We have an anti-camping ordinance. Why are we just not honoring that? Why are we allowing people, somebody here in town, why are we cleaning up everybody else's crap? They need to do it. Why is the tree that somebody, one of the people who go up there frequently said, "That tree is dying because people are pounding in stuff to hang their clothes and their other stuff on." I really want you to consider the people of Fairfax as much as you consider the people who are homeless in Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Frank?
Frank Agar from the Cascades. You know, I noticed there's no report from the police chief in your packet tonight. This is a huge issue with enforcement, but there's no report from the police chief. So I wonder what city this ordinance came from, and have you spoken to council members from that city to see how it's worked for them? The intent here is to repeal an existing ordinance that's been in effect for a long time, and that ordinance was never meant to address camping at all, which is an ordinance to close the park at nighttime. Once you repeal this ordinance, you open our parks 24/7. We have one police officer on duty from 2:00 to 6:00 a.m. How can one officer patrol downtown, patrol the neighborhoods, and now have to patrol the park to make sure there's no one in the park? Since it's no longer an ordinance, there's no longer be an ordinance that prohibits it. This ordinance will create new public safety threats for our town by allowing nighttime use of our parks. The current signs behind the women's club and by the children's park that says Town of Fairfax, Perry Park rules, park hours, sunrise to sunset, no alcoholic beverages, no smoking or vaping, right there in a sign as you walk into the park. Fairfax is a small town with limited resources. Fairfax cannot take on other communities' urban campers. None of the urban campers in our park are Fairfax residents. None can say they were Fairfax residents that lost their housing. This ordinance has loopholes. The current location of the urban encampment is on top of a huge landslide from Pavilion Hill that's slipping into the creek. There's liability there, having people camp at that location. We're coming into winter, storms, and there's liability on part of the town.
Thank you, Frank.
If you can't enforce the nighttime law, how can you enforce this law?
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Want to agree with everything the first speaker, Robbie, said. He was absolutely correct. You know, the town attorney had an uphill task in trying to craft something that is legally defensible, because any ordinance like this is not defensible, and there's going to be a million holes you can poke into it because of the extreme right-wing majority's tortured manipulation of the law to prohibit people from living when they have nowhere else to go. Everyone here is asking questions about enforcement, and it's a very important question because what-
Be quiet, and yes, he does. Please stop the clock. Mallory, be quiet or leave the room. PJ, go ahead.
It's a good point on enforcement, because what this doesn't answer, what happens if somebody gets a fine? What happens if someone's stuff is stored for 30 days, they come pick it up on the 29th day, they go back, you take it again, is it stored again for 30 days? And it just goes on and on, and this is just a spiraling cost for the town. Why is the town spending resources telling someone with nowhere else to go that they can't stay in a certain place with no permanent solution here? There's not, they're not getting housing. You're just going to keep fining them. Are you going to put them in jail? They're not going to stay there indefinitely. Are they just going to come back? All of this is just spending more and more resources to do something morally repugnant as a stain on the town and doesn't actually get us anywhere except for wasted resources that could be spent trying to actually provide shelters. We have that atmospheric river coming. There's not nearly enough inclement, extreme weather shelters for Marin County's homeless population. We should be spending our resources on stuff like that, not shuffling people and their belongings to and from a storage unit in a jail. What does that solve? It's, at best, a temporary benefit.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hey, Mike Curraghelli here. In life and business and right now, what we're talking about, there's more than one issue here. One, of course, is homelessness and encampments, and the other one is the safety of our children and our community and our parks. And they need to be put into silos, so it's not compassionate to leave people outside to sleep. And in the last 20 years or so, we've all seen the problem get worse. Only a fraction of a percent of our population is unhoused. To me, that means there's an opportunity to solve the problem. And one of those things that we came up with is a plan called Compassion City, Rescue City. These are regional county living quarters for the unhoused. They are campuses for the unhoused. The problem with what they're doing now, it's fragmented. There's some in Fairfax, there's some in Santa Fel, and people are running around, and there's all these agencies. This needs to be in one thing. Imagine, like, college campus, a dormitory. So, long story short, one reason what I ran on was to make it safe for the ball field, make it safe for the little leaguers. There is crime going on up there. I like, I know everybody up there. I talk to them. I put two and a half loads of garbage in my truck and throw it out, okay? I also don't agree with the gentleman, who I guess was on a phone, that claimed we were mean to people or this or that, complete opposite, actually. So whatever he said, wrong. So we can solve this problem, but it's two problems. One, we have to protect our community. Two, we have to come up with a real solution. I will be talking to the county supervisors and the governor of California to come up with a real solution. None of this way we've been doing it. It's been unsuccessful, been a total failure. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Deb London. I just wanted to say that you have to keep the parks closed at night. I think that's dangerous territory. You're making it worse. That has to keep up. The park needs to be closed at night. And the resident, the people who are living in those camps are not Fairfax residents at all. So you're more worried about them than you're worried about the residents of this town, and the kids, and their parks, and it's nonsense. You need to protect them. And you also have to, once again, stop listening to outside influencers. That's ridiculous. And this ordinance, in my opinion, has no teeth. There's no mention of arrest or mandatory or jail time. Where's the tough love? Where's the mandatory rehab? This is just like, 50% of this ordinance is about storage, which is something that, this is your baby, Janet. You talked about it the last meeting. We have to store their stuff. Oh my gosh, there's stuff.
Please don't disparage staff. Thank you.
Well, I'll speak how I want to speak. It's my two minutes, and it's nonsense.
It's not.
This, yes, it is.
You cannot disparage staff, please.
Well, then, don't act in a disparaging manner. But this is, this was all about, this is all about storage. It's like, it's a waste of time, and it's nonsense, and I can't wait to see you, Heather Abrams, in a hazmat suit and rubber gloves going through bags of garbage. I mean, it's ridiculous. So, and how dare Gary in this town council chastise Sean and Mike for going down there and trying to make a difference? How dare you? I don't know. It's just one thing after another with you guys. So this thing, if you want a camping ordinance, you have to keep the parks closed at night, and you need to give it some teeth. This is ridiculous. It's all about storage. Bye.
Thank you. Are there speakers on Zoom? Did you have to, you've already spoken. No, please sit down. Are there speakers on Zoom? There aren't? The first speaker is Cindy, followed by Deb. Cindy, you are unmuted.
Hi, Cindy Ross, longtime Fairfax resident. And I want to say that I don't buy the legally defensible argument here. What I see this ordinance as is a manner to evade responsibility. As others have said, we have ordinances that are designed to protect us. It makes sense to have the park closed, or if somebody wants to be in the park overnight, they ask permission. What's wrong with that? You know, I understand it's a problem. There are people that are unhoused, and it's, some people through no fault of their own, and it's difficult. I wouldn't have any problem if somebody asked permission. I don't mind if somebody uses the public park benches. I don't even mind if people, you know, want to sleep in the pavilion, as long as they follow the rules, they do it with permission, they don't drink alcohol, they don't smoke, they don't do drugs, they don't set fires, they don't do things that ruin it for everybody else and make it unsafe for everybody else. So I absolutely, I'm stunned that you would even talk about repealing ordinances and then trying to replace it with something that really is just being, as others have said also, being more concerned about storing somebody else's stuff. That makes no sense, you know? And finally, I want to say something about the word camping. Camping, the way it's used, is a recreational activity, and that's not what this is about. These are people that, you know, are wanting to live here without taking the responsibility or being made to be responsible to uphold laws, and that's the problem that I have with it. So you need to keep the ordinances on-
Your next speaker, please. The next speaker is Deb, followed by Kay. Deb, you are unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you, council members, for hearing me. I'd like to take off on something that Cindy just said. In the national parks, you can camp, but there's a time limit. In Samuel P., you can camp, but there's a time limit. So this is not camping. Everything I'm looking at in this ordinance is pointed towards protecting the homeless camper, so to speak. The Governor Newsom's approach and the Caltrans' approach was to legally give 48 to 72 hours notice to leave, with 60 days' storage of belongings, open and shut, that's it. You know, in Ireland, if somebody is, so to speak, on the dole, they have to work to continue their input of the dole. So in my mind, I've been homeless before. I lived in my car for about six months because I couldn't find a job. So either somebody can't find a job, there are a lot of unemployment notices up, somebody's, you know, mentally impaired, there's help out there, somebody is drug addicted, there's also help out there. Don't mean to be insensitive, but we're, you know, as a community, paying a lot to house people in a really inhumane way who need help in other directions. So this ordinance, I think, is faulted. We have an ordinance that says, "You can't be in the park at night." The police can come in and say, "You can't be in the park at night, and you're being removed." I know there's a lot of help needed. Sam Rafael has some money that's been awarded to them recently by the county through the federal government. I would say, point these people to help, because we're not helping them. We're not helping them. It's not a pretty picture. It's not a pretty life for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Kay, followed by Mark. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi, I'm going to get through this and not cry. So I have a lot of experience with this population. I was a nurse, as you all know, in San Quentin, and I actually appreciate what PJ said. I appreciate what Mike said tonight. There is a, and I also appreciate Sean bringing, down there, bringing attention to this. I think where we failed was we ignored the situation, and that's, we can't do that. Their stuff is really important to them, so I appreciate you talking about stuff. That's all they have, and it might not seem like anything to you, but when that's all you have, it's really important. I mean, at least in prison, if guys got, they were more concerned about going to the hospital and someone taking their stuff than getting proper medical care. So that's just reality. I just really want to see our town council talk about this, continue to talk about this and address it, and it's not a way to live, but also adding stress and kicking people around is not the answer either. But you have to address it, so thank you. Bye.
Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Mark, followed by Nancy. Mark, you are unmuted.
Hello, thanks. This is Mark Solomon. I'm happy to join the conversation. Last time, we had two presentations. One was on Vin Shaw, Lynette, and her marijuana, and this, the call was to create an ordinance, and that's what has happened. I am not going to get into the details of this. Other people have, but I think it is a step towards making the ball field workable for the kids and the creek. I read in the IJ that Berkeley is among more than 75 cities that have imposed new restrictions, and liberal enclaves like Santa Monica have moved on homeless encampments. The council member said in conclusion in this article, "This is an impossible situation trying to be balanced and reasonable, but this is not the Bay Area swinging to the right." You know, what I'm asking myself is, the call was to do something. This is an action that will clear these camps. Maybe a solution is to have staffing, Community Action Marin, the county, provide a place to stay in the pavilion. Someone else referred to that. But, I mean, I am in favor of this ordinance, is what I'm saying. I also sent a note mentioning that, from a Jewish perspective- Um, I also sent a note mentioning that from a Jewish perspective, we want to welcome the stranger in our midst. And that's a theological statement, but at the same time, we don't want people to take advantage of public spaces. So I guess I'm a voice saying, I hope you will take action. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Nancy, followed by Katie. Nancy, you are unmuted. Nancy, you may need to unmute yourself. Let's go to the next speaker. Katie, you are unmuted.
Hi. Um, I'd just like to know if anything has been done to consider the impact of the location of the encampment and the safety implications for Perry Park Playground and the Creek. Many of the campers have admitted to using drugs just yards from where our children play. And I'm just, I'm not hearing a lot of consideration for the fact that the location of this encampment is not just in any park. It is close to where our children are and children have no say in these matters and also deserve a safe place to play in town. And I'd just like to be able to bring my child to the local park and feel confident that it's a safe place for them to play. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to go back to Nancy and see if she can unmute herself? Yeah. Nancy, I'm going to unmute you again. Hey. You want to make sure the, the microphone on your computer, your phone isn't turned off? I can tell she's unmuted herself, but I think maybe. Why don't we go to, is there another speaker? Okay. Um, well, I think we're going to have to pass on that one. She sent an email earlier. Okay, so I'm closing public comment and bringing it back to the council. Okay, when I call for public comment. Okay, come on. Last public comment.
Hi, thank you. Um, so I'd like to thank the council for taking action. Um, I spoke a couple of meetings ago and, um, appreciate the effort. I also would request that it not be jammed through quickly and be well thought out and discussed and not voted on necessarily tonight, but to look at it, you know, and have more time to absorb it and get more public comment because I don't think that everybody knew that this meeting was happening tonight on short notice. Um, and then also the point of order that I think Doug was trying to communicate, um, is that, uh, any attempt to restrict the content of such speech of, um, basically criticizing, um, uh, public employees is okay per the Brown Act. It's, it's like, if they don't agree, you can actually criticize people. And then to comment on the first speaker, um, uh, sorry. Um, basically criticizing parents of the children that stood up and spoke. That was my child that stood up and spoke and my child cares about the homeless people and actually said to me, driving through San Rafael one day, Mommy, mommy, if I were president or if I was on the town council, I'd, I'd, my first priority would be to find these people somewhere to live. And so I think it's really important that we do find global, bigger solutions to this problem, but also, you know, he's scared to go to the park with his friends because he knows that people are unsafe and screaming at people in the park. So anyway, thank you for taking action and please consider, you know, taking time with it and not just rushing it through. And then also, um, I think opening it up for removing the no camping at night or no being in the park overnight, I think is a mistake and we need to make sure that that stays in place. So, thank you.
Would you mind turning the button off when you're through? Thank you. Okay, um, I guess, uh, Attorney Colson, you wanted to speak?
I do. I heard a lot of things that are, uh, not exactly correct and I want to make sure that everybody understands what we're doing and why we're doing it so that we have, uh, same understanding. First, the last speaker mentioned the Brown Act and criticizing people. Let me read it to you. "The legislative body of a local agency shall not prohibit public criticism of the policies, procedures, programs, or services of the agency or of the acts or omissions of the legislative body." Period. Staff is not mentioned. Second, we have ordinances. Ordinances take two readings, two times they have to pass through the legislative body for approval. Introduction is the first reading. That would be tonight if it is introduced. Second reading is the adoption. Adoption happens only at a regular meeting. Introduction could happen at a special meeting. Adoption would happen in December. Then there was a 30-day waiting period, basically for referendum purposes, but there's a 30-day waiting period, so it would not take effect until the first week of January. And the reason why I included those two sections of the current code is because they're old, they're outdated, and they're really not enforceable right now, certainly not to try to deal with an encampment. And the other thing is there are many provisions in this code that are similar. There are park rules that are scattered throughout the code. They really should be pulled together in one document in one place. There should be a resolution that has all the park rules on it. No alcohol, uh, no being in the park after dark, um, yeah, no glass bottles, no smoking, no vaping, no, all of the different rules for the parks should be contained in one document, a resolution. And my plan was to bring back a resolution that includes all of those things, including don't be in the park after dark before this takes effect. So there will be no time period when it would be okay to be in the park after dark or during the nighttime. So I hope that clears up some of it. I'm happy to answer any questions the council would have.
Just one point of clarification. Our next meeting is December 4th. Should this be introduced tonight, the, the second reading would be on December 4th. Um, the next meeting is scheduled for January 9th. We approved that at the last meeting. So this, uh, ordinance, should it be introduced, should two readings happen, would happen before that? I, I think it's, um, I think the idea of doing a resolution with all these rules is a good idea, but I think it's highly unlikely, given holidays and such, that we'd be able to put that together before January 9th.
Oh, I was bringing it back in December.
Yeah, I thi, I think, I mean, I think that's a good thought, but I think we ought to also realize there's holidays in between and December 4th is coming up. So, um, good idea, not a bad idea. I think Councilmember Ackerman had some points to make. And then I think Councilmember Cottano was next.
Yeah, I, uh, this is just a couple of things, just in the response to the, to the public comment, but this is not, I think we'll all have more to say about the ordinance itself and what action we should take tonight. One thing, just similarly to the clarifications that Janet made, uh, it seemed to be, as, as I understood from some of the comments, that there was a concern that the ordinances that are being, in tonight's action, should we take it, would be repealed, that the sections of the code that would be repealed would be repealed before the new ones came on. That's not the case. This would all happen at the same time, which would be 30 days after the second reading. So there isn't going to be any period of time in which we have less protection than we have now. Okay? Clarifying that. And then just, uh, as far as just the, the years of inaction comment, which we hear so many times, I just wanted to, to ask, when was it? I think, I think I heard that it was in June. I don't remember myself, but.
June 28.
That the, uh, branch's pass decision came down. So that was the end of June, I think. So we've had July, August, September, October. Now it's November and we're taking action. There's been a lot of study on this. There's been an ordinance written, um, I don't know, I, it's not been years. It's been a fairly short period of time, just in defense of all of us and staff and numerous other people who've been working on this. But that's all I wanted to say right now. Except just that public comment was confusing to me tonight. I'm not sure. I thought that an overwhelming number of people in the public, at least the most vocal people, including people who drove a tractor through the town, wanted us to do an ordinance just like this. And now it seems like nobody likes the ordinance, so I'm, I'm really unclear, but maybe this will be clarified.
Okay, Councilmember Cottano?
Yeah, I would, um, tend to agree in terms of the diversity of, of the public comment. Kind of leaves me wondering, um, maybe the, the best thing that we're able to do at this juncture is, um, to have provided this sort of gift of an alternative, possibly more legally defensible ordinance, um, and deliver that to the next council and a lot, you know, that will be seated come December and allow them to figure out if they want to actually move forward with a formal anti-camping ordinance or if they feel like they want to move forward with the, the legacy laws that are on the books and see how the community fares, um, you know, with one or the other. So especially given that, you know, even that last, the last speaker asking us to not move quickly, um, some speakers who have been up at the camp quite a bit, saying that campers up there need more, more notice or we need to, you know, provide better due process. Uh, I guess I'm, I'm left feeling like we've done an important job in bringing this forward, but maybe, uh, the next council wants to deliberate on, on whether or not they actually move forward with this or if they stick to what's on the books and see how that goes.
Uh, Vice Mayor Blash?
Yeah. Um, so I think we're going to, you know, kind of go back and forth in discussing some elements of the ordinance itself and, um, possibly take up, uh, Councilmember Cottano's idea or not. I just wanted to notice about the idea that these are not Fairfax residents. Um, a number of people in that camp have lived here longer than a lot of the housed people I know and a lot of us have moved from elsewhere and famously tell our origin stories of how we came here from Vermont and we came over the hill and it was so glorious, we just had to stay. Well, um, those campers probably had the same experience. Um, so I just want to mention that, uh, and there are people there who are connected to people in town. I did want to also note that, um, there, you know, we talked to the campers several times, that people are bringing them lots of stuff, stuff that they sometimes don't want. So, um, that's sometimes why there's a bit of a mess because people will dump stuff there. Uh, there were a number of bicycles there today that were not wanted, that were left there for them, that were not functional. So just going to put that out there. Um, and we also had, and, and along the lines of, um, you know, what we were talking about, some of the confusion, we were told by, a couple of campers today were super confused because they were told by a couple of people who came to the camp that they were going to provide them with porta potties and housing. Um, and they said, but they said they were going to give it to us. They were going to bring us all this stuff. And so they were really confused about who is bringing them what and why they were being promised things. Um, so we heard that from them themselves. So just to put that out there, that people were really confused about what, who's offering what and why are they offering it? And also very confused that people would be offering them housing and food and other stuff and also wanting to push them out. So they were, you know, asking, why is that? So just want to put that out there that that's what we heard. And no, 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 it's, it's okay.
Michael, be quiet.
So I just want to, you know, mention that there is some confusion and whether it's what you actually said or not, that's how it was perceived. So I just want to, you know, people to have some compassion and understand that there have been services provided, that there are people, and they don't necessarily have to be there for an hour every single time, but there are people who are in consistent contact as you heard Mr. Nahari say. Um, you know, our police chief can affirm that the police visit frequently. So there are people working with them. However, I have appreciated the compassion that some people have shown, um, you know, bringing people breakfast, being willing to talk to them, bringing them pizza. You know, I think that's all great. I just want to make sure that people aren't getting promised stuff that makes them confused about who's promising them what for what reason. Um, so a couple of things that I am just curious about, um, with some of this is the timeframe for how we would implement this. Um, you know, it does seem like there's a, a mix of opinion on this and, you know, I'm, not, you know, we had a special meeting tonight. Whether we need to rush this through or not is definitely a question that I have. Um, and if indeed we did decide to pass the ordinance tonight, does the date of implementation have to take place, you know, like beginning of January? Or can it be extended if indeed we feel that there is a necessity of allowing people a little longer time to find a place to be?
So the ordinance, um, after the second read, 30 days is when it would take effect. It doesn't mean it's when you would have to necessarily, um, do an enforcement action. That is discretionary and is up to, um, the council. You can also delay the effective date of an ordinance. I don't think here that's really, um, beneficial when you already have the ability to decide when and where and how you enforce it.
Can I chime in with something?
Yeah, go ahead.
Just on the timing. I, we didn't hear from, um, leadership or membership from Westmoreland Little League, but they have been very outspoken and like, I believe the spring session starts in February. That's what we heard last meeting. So I guess I'm a little concerned because they've been very vocal and I guess I'm concerned if we're talking about pushing it out, we are bumping into that February date. So, uh, I don't know that I'm helping the confusion, but I just like, to me, that, that date stood out.
Well, yeah, if I can interject, I think part of the subcommittee's rationale for moving forward quickly with a solution is that if we had a special meeting in between our, our last meeting and the December regular meeting, we'd be able to get to the second reading at our December regular meeting. It would go into, uh, effect 30 days after that and we would be able to put forward an enforcement action by the time that Little League, um, would start up. And so I think that's the, the super arching question of homelessness everywhere is, is this just the new normal or are we going to eventually resolve this and when are we going to resolve it by? Um, so that all seemed like a good timeline, especially given, as Gary mentioned, that more vouchers will come online start of the year. There might be more lead time for coordination of both services and, um, homeward bound shelter beds, uh, in that timeframe. But again, I'm, there's still, despite attempting to contort ourselves to do all of these things, there's still a lot of opposition. Um, so I, I'm not convinced that, that that's, that solution, solution is even workable for the people who are most vehemently opposed to, um, having the encampment there.
Yeah, and I just, I, I continue to have some questions about some parts of the ordinance. For instance, um, you know, there's a lot of mention about sleeping and it mostly seems to suggest that the sleeping is prohibited in places where it could be an obstruction or safety hazard. So for instance, sleeping in the middle of the sidewalk or in the door of a business. But, you know, I have some concern about, you know, if somebody is sleeping on a blanket at the town picnic or if they set up a little shade tent, if that's going to be forbidden as well under this ordinance?
Are you asking me to?
Sorry, yes.
Okay. So, um, 9.30, 0.050 unauthorized encampments or sleeping on public property. A talks about it being unlawful for a person to camp or maintain an encampment upon public property and then list out some different public properties. B says no person may sleep on any public sidewalk, bus shelter, street, alleyway, median, parkway, or right of way, or in any pedestrian or vehicular entrance to public or private property, abutting a public sidewalk at any time, as to do so compromises individual and public safety. At all times, it's unlawful for any person to camp, maintain an encampment, or sleep where such activity poses, A, or one, an immediate threat or unreasonable risk of harm to any person, two. to any person, two, an immediate threat or an unreasonable risk of harm to public health, safety, or welfare, or three, disruption to any business store, religious institution, educational facility, or government services. It goes on and then talks about where else you can't sleep. So I don't anticipate that sleeping on a blanket in the park during a picnic is going to be a problem.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to-
It's not covered in this.
Check on that. I think the other concern that I have in some ways is, you know, we received some really interesting public comment and some really interesting letters. One of them was quite detailed from a person who works in homeless services. And, you know, I just don't know if there's anything from that person's commentary that could be incorporated into this ordinance, because, you know, this is a person who has been a long time contributor to our town, who also has expert knowledge and was an interesting commentary.
Well, I'm not sure where this is headed. You know, I got to say that one of the things I think we ought to look into is something I think Vice Mayor Blash was sort of questioning Gary, Najer Reese, and also I was, is the possibility of doing something different, where you're basically putting a cap, no more. Okay, so I don't know how many people are there now, five or six, who say no more. As of this date, no more folks can come there. And we work with the county at a minimum to see about, can we focus people towards at least a shelter environment? I understand that Gary mentioned that they have to be on a path towards housing. It's not about what we think of the old shelters where people went for like one night and moved on. So, and also understand it can be weeks or months before somebody can get into a shelter. But that's one of the things that I'm thinking of, is rather than this, and I, you know, the field is ours. And Westmore and Little League has given us less than what it costs to maintain it for a number of years. And it's not about Westmore and Little League. They have a timeframe which is different than maybe what Councilmember Cutrano was sort of talking about is maybe, it seems like, I think there was an attempt to put together something in response to what we heard at the last meeting and the protest. And it appears that people don't like it. So it may be better to just put this off. And, you know, Westmore and Little League's timeframe doesn't work. And really look at this very thoughtfully with the new council. A couple of us will be the old council, but maybe that's the way to go. But I think in the meantime, seeing if there's a possible different path, which is basically saying, there's an end of the number that's there. There's a timeframe where the encampment must be cleared. And I think I heard Gary mention, you know, some of these things go on for three years, for a year and a half, but given that there's a small number, there could be a shorter timeframe. And before you go on, I'm just, you know, I'm really sort of, I feel like what was done was an attempt to try to meet that. I'm not sure where I would have been on it as far as the vote. But Councilmember Ackerman, what did you want to say?
Well, I, if, if I understand you correctly, you're proposing, and I've just only heard that thought, don't know whatever anyone else will think about it, but the idea of, and you're not talking about limiting it to a certain number, like five or six, you're saying those actual individuals who were there will, are, they, no other individuals can come and join them. If that's what would be proposed, I think there would still need to be some way of enforcing that. So this ordinance could be used to enforce that. And as, as was, as Janet said, that when this ordinance, if we, if we were to pass this ordinance as it is now, when it went into effect, which would be next year in January, that doesn't mean it has to be enforced that day. And it could be enforced if people wanted this. It could be enforced, like you were saying, where this people who are there now could be relocated, find, find places for them to be relocated, but not just abate the camp and leave them wandering around. But I think we'd still need the ordinance to do it. I don't see any reason why we would be able to say no one else could come and camp under the current ordinance. I don't think it, it would do that.
I'm just going to tell you, there's a multitude of reasons why this encampment is not in a good location. And I don't think we want to rehash that. But I am not in favor of that, not. And I don't really understand, in light of what Janet offered this evening with the resolution, which will detail, you know, what you can and can't do, I, I'm, I'm really not clear why the ordinance is not acceptable. I felt like we did listen and we responded. So, but I, I am adamant about clearing that encampment. It's not the right location for many, many reasons. And I think, I, I think enough said.
Okay. I suppose then if you want to make a motion, or I think Vice Mayor Blash wanted to say something.
Yeah, I'm just going to add a little thing for us to make a decision with, which is, you know, we have been in conversation with a lot of social service providers. So, you know, the whole idea that people will go into a shelter, you know, is a possibility. It's not a done deal, but it's something that we could continue to work with Gary and others on. But I just want to put it out there, it's not a hundred percent done deal, but it could be a feasible thing, just that a lot of people, it's not the appropriate housing for them, but it would be the best we could do. So just wanted to put that up there. And I agree, it's not a great location. It's just been that there's been nowhere else that was appropriate. And so it's a difficult conundrum because we're talking about banning camping in all of Fairfax, because we are unhappy about people being in that particular location.
We don't need to rehash it, but last meeting, we, we hadn't been hearing about some of the drug activity. There's children there. I mean, it's just not, it's not okay.
Okay, so I'm just going to make a quick statement, and then if you want to make a motion, go ahead. So I'm really sort of concerned about what I viewed as my community. That demonstration to me was horrifying. The lack of humanity about these folks is, they are people, they're not objects. There's no silver bullet or easy answer. Can you please be quiet? You can leave if, if I'm disturbing you by my comments. We do know that Health and Human Services pays more visits to our small encampment than they do to any of the large ones. We do know that our police are there every day on their, on their path. We also know that our Public Works guys have the guys put their trash near the compost pile so they can pick it up at least once a week. The mobile showers come to our library once a week. Several of these folks are signed up for housing, we heard tonight. Two of our former campers have been permanently housed. I'm concerned with the criminalization of homelessness, including a camping ban, bans on sleeping in a car, and sweeps of encampment. And people do lose their possessions typically and just move across the street or nearby. Okay, I'll just repeat that. I'm concerned regarding the criminalization of homelessness, including camping bans, bans on sleeping in a car, and sweeps of encampments. People tend to lose their possessions typically and just move across the street or nearby. We need to provide more affordable housing and acceptance of Section 8 and other vouchers, which are veterans, disabled voucher holders for housing. I do strongly support the Housing First concept, which has been very successful in housing a lot of folks across the county. But I also support more investment in shelters. With the limited number in the county, it's not enough. There's simply not enough permanent housing. So with that, if you want to make a motion, Councilmember Hellman, please go ahead.
And I don't know that it's what the public wants. That's why I'm, and we're still-
Well, then, I felt like you-
I'm in, I'm personally in favor of it, but I still think it's a little confusing-
So what would you like to propose?
Um.
Yeah, I think, I, if I can interject real quick. I think a prudent approach would be to continue this item to the next meeting. You can let, oh, you don't need to clap. This is just a off-the-cuff comment. The thing that gives me some solace in that is, we have this tool, the tool's developed, you know, the next council can decide to shelve it and do something differently, or they can decide not to, and they can move forward if the next council does decide to move forward with it, and they do have a first reading at the next meeting. And then there would be a second reading in January. I think it would still line up pretty well with what met, I know it's not all about Westmore and Little League, but just trying to have some sense of, some semblance of a timeline here. And I think that's still possible.
Yeah, I think that works. And it, has there been, and I, I walk through and I have conversations, but I don't think I've passed through as often as Lee Sol and Chance do. Do they know that this is coming? So I feel like if there's some, like, communication is key. So can we just advise that there is an intent and that it would be a good idea for them to start exploring their options?
I mean, it's, it's definitely already been advised on multiple occasions, and even talking through, not saying, here's the door, but saying, in the event that something like this were to happen, what would your plan be? Just for us too, trying to understand what the implications are for folks. And like, it's good to socialize it and get thinking about like different possibilities. That, that's taking place and has taken place for-
Yeah, because the 72 hours is, doesn't feel like a heck of a lot of time, but if they know, for example, that this is coming, then-
Yeah, and I've also communicated with all of the folks that work with them that this might be coming. And so, you know, people are aware and have, are willing to, if this does indeed pass, willing to work with them on this and the county.
Can I just say for the record, I hope that the next council does really seriously consider this, because I do think that this is more legally defensible than the prior law, which is why we're even talking about this in all of its detail. I know people don't like the detail about storing this and storing that, but there's a rhyme and reason to all of it. And I hope that folks, especially the new folks in the room, take, take a serious look at it. Thanks.
Do we need a motion to continue this to the, so can someone make a-
I'll make a motion to continue this item.
To the December 4th meeting?
To the December 4th meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes.
Okay, let's take a eight-minute break. Well, it's 10 o'clock, so we're reviewing the agenda. And I think at this point, rather than making any determinations about other items, let's just waive the 10 o'clock rule. And I would like to suggest that we do item eight next and move item seven after it. So can we get a motion to waive the 10 o'clock rule?
Still moved. Oh, I'll second.
Okay.
Okay, so we have, who was first? Vice Mayor Blash. Second, Councilmember Cutrano, could you take a roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Rest on.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. And do we need a motion to move item eight ahead of item seven? I can't hear you.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, could somebody make a motion to move item eight ahead of item seven? Go ahead.
I move that we move item eight in front of item seven.
Okay, was somebody like-
I'll second.
Okay, so we have Vice Mayor Blash first, second, Cutrano. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yep.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. And I want to mention that we have a supplement to item eight that's really just a change on kind of one page probably of the document, but it's in redline and it's up on the safe. And I think it's been posted as well. So with that, we, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a little verklempt over here. Hold on, I'm moving things. I got a lot of paper. I, I know, I get it. But thank you, thank you for helping. So Jeff, Planning Director Byswinger, could you give us a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to share my screen here and give you a staff report. Okay, so this item is to discuss changes to the short-term rental regulations that the town now has. So these are amendments to existing regulations that have been in place since 2022. And prior to that, Fairfax didn't really regulate short-term rentals. We had many in the community, but they just weren't regulated. Maybe that worked. There we go. This might be washed out, but this is a map that appears, this is RentalScape, this is what we're using to kind of track short-term rentals. And we won't spend too much time on here, but basically you can vaguely make out the dots, the projector's washing it out unfortunately. But this shows where all the, approximately where all the short-term rentals are located in town, and these are everything. These are like the licensed, unlicensed, active, non-active, and they're all coded by color.
And that's Fairfax? That's not Marin County?
This is just Fairfax, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
So there's kind of a range of regulatory options. See, the thing about short-term rentals is there's, we can make our own rules, there's no state law that says we have to allow them or not allow them.
Speak more into that.
So there's the full range of options, which even in a microcosm like Marin County, there's a broad spectrum of the ways that jurisdictions regulate short-term rentals. Kind of on one side, there's the outright ban, where you don't allow them anywhere within the jurisdiction. This is like Larkspur, for example, is like that, they don't allow it anywhere. I think Belvedere is another one. And then on the other side, where there's just no regulations at all, ironically Ross is one of those. And then where, but, but they're, they're allowed, they just don't regulate them. And so what I think we're trying to do, and what was done in 2022, is trying to find that magic spot in the middle where we allow some short-term rentals, but we have regulations in place to protect neighbors, require registration, develop a little bit of revenue with a hotel user tax, because they're essentially a hotel use, and then have some active code enforcement. So we're kind of trying to strike that balance in there. So the way that short-term rentals are currently regulated, it's kind of two parts of the municipal code. First is kind of the orange is the zoning ordinance, where we have where is it permitted, what zoning districts is our short-term rentals permitted in, and, you know, parking regulations. And then on the other side, there's the business regulations, and that's where the registration's required, and where, you know, park, property eligibility, licensing enforcement. And then there's kind of another part of the code that deals with kind of code enforcement that helps reinforce the code enforcement that's in the business regulations. So the current regulations are- So the current regulations are somewhat restrictive in terms of short-term rentals. They're only allowed in single-family homes only. Also, they're, they're required to be hosted, where the host of the short-term rental must be the primary, it must be the primary residence of the dwelling. And not permitted as short-term rentals are duplexes, accessory dwelling units built after 2020, and then also spaces not designed for residential uses like sheds and that type of things. There was a short-term rental in an RV, for example, and that's not a permitted short-term rental.
Excuse me, Jeff, the ADUs built after 2020, that's state law, correct?
Correct, that is state law, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that refers to certificate of occupancy. So if somebody says, I built it in 2008, but it was never legalized, it's not technically there until the date that it is.
Yeah, it has to be legal, has to be legalized as an ADU.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I don't think you finished the bottom. I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, and just so to say, so it's not allowed in any multi-unit building such as a duplex or apartment. That's the current, current regulations. And it's only allowed in three, well, four zoning districts. That's the RS 7.5, single-family, RS 6, single-family, and then the two Upland residential zones, the UR 7, UR 10. Of the one zone where we actually had a lot of single-family homes is the RD 5.7 to 7, and they're not currently allowed in that, which a lot of people are trying to register they're in that zone. There's, just to the, the average resident, they, there's not much difference between an RD 5.5 and an RS 6. You know, I mean, they're basically single-family homes on a lot, it's just the lot size is just a little bit different. So there's not really much distinction between the different zoning districts. And then also Fairfax is somewhat unique in that we have a lot of single-family homes in commercial zones. So that they were just zoned over time, they were just zoned as commercial, just because it may have been next to a commercial area. So there is a lot of single-family homes and other types of dwellings that are in commercial zones. And then also there's additional parking spaces required for short-term rentals. There's, and basically there's an extra parking space for a short-term rental plus the two parking spaces for permanent residents. And so we've had 21 registrations, applications, and 12 have been approved and nine have been denied. Of the nine that have been denied, this is kind of the chart. And properties that haven't registered, we don't know if they would qualify or not until they register. We don't really know their circumstance. But one of the, the big one is the zoning, like, a lot of them are in the RD 5.5 to 7. There's, some of them have insufficient parking. And sometimes it's not just that they don't just have the parking spaces required, but maybe they don't have the right configuration. Maybe the driveway's a little bit too narrow, so it doesn't have the right dimension of a parking space, or it's a tandem layout. So it's not simply as simple as they just don't have the parking on the lot all the time. And then these three are duplexes, where someone lives in one side and then wants to rent out the other side as, as a short-term rental. And then the, the last one is they just don't live on the property, like, they might be an investor from another town. We had a gentleman try to register a short-term rental that they own, and I think they currently live out of state. So that's, that's another factor. So we would recommend code changes to allow short-term rentals in most zoning districts that allow residential uses, allow them in most housing types, except for, you know, by state law, the ADUs built after 2020, and then allow a limited waiver to parking. So the, this is a little bit of a description of how the parking waiver would work. And so we took this to the Planning Commission to fine-tune this. So in order to be eligible, you have to meet the other requirements of the zoning code. There can't be any code violations. And then it's, it's an obligation of the applicant to demonstrate that there's low parking demand. In some cases, there's, they just, they, you know, it's a very small, it's just a single room, there's very little demand for parking, or there's nearby parking available. So they can apply, then there's notice that's provided to the neighbors, and then if they, if the neighbors complain, then it would be appealed to the town council. So that's a general sketch of how the parking waiver would work. So again, so there's two parts to this. So there's the zoning code, which I just described, and then there's the business regulations. There's a lot in the business regulations. There's no requirement that, that the town council receive a recommendation from the Planning Commission on that section of the, of the municipal code, because it's not zoning, but the Planning Commission did provide you with recommendations anyway. So I'll go through those, and I'll explain where kind of the Planning Commission differed from the staff recommendation in a couple of places. So the, one question that we have is should the occupancy requirements change? Currently, in order to do a short-term rental, they have to be a hosted rental, so the, the person has to be in the unit that's being rented. One way, which we've, we've written it like this, is that the, the host could just live on the property, and then this would open the door to like, allowing a duplex to be used as a short-term rental if the, if the host lived on the property. And so that staff would recommend that, the Planning Commission did not want to go that far. They wanted to kind of keep duplexes out of the realm of short-term rentals. The, the change, the permanent resident of the property, so, so anyway, that's the same thing, which changes the permanent resident of the property. And then could the owner live elsewhere in Fairfax or out of town? This is what I mentioned earlier, and we wouldn't recommend doing this. We would think that the, the person that's renting, it should be a hosted rental, where the person should be onsite in order to have a short-term rental. They shouldn't be able to buy a property from out of town and then start using it as a short-term rental. Yes.
I have a clarification on just how it works today, because there are a few single-family homes on my street that I know are rented out. So how does the system work today? And does it catch those? Or, I mean?
It tries to catch them, yes. There's the Airbnb and VRBO and the other sites, they, many of them try to disguise the exact location of the short-term rental for privacy reasons, and also so that they can't be regulated. So the, this is why we use a company such as Deckard, so that we can try, find the addresses to be able to send them a letter to tell them that they need to register or, or stop.
But does the software communicate back to Airbnb or VRBO or whatever it is that, and disallow those rentals because they're not legal?
Yeah, we have to take, and we have to take an extra enforcement step to do that.
Okay, and we're not there yet. We don't do that today.
We, we're getting very close to there. We've sent letters to all the short-term rentals that we've been able to find. We've sent them at least a couple of letters, in some cases, three letters.
Okay.
And we've made contact with Airbnb, and so we, yeah, we're going to start working on that. And one thing, what I was going to mention at the conclusion of the PowerPoint, is that we, we would like to get kind of the regulatory thing kind of settled, so that we know what the rules are, so that that helps us with enforcement, so that we can just have, we don't have a moving target.
Okay, thank you.
And Jeffrey. Why don't you let him finish? And then we can ask questions. Sorry.
I only have a handful of slides left.
Okay, go ahead.
Fucking close. Yeah. So. So there was a suggestion that the Planning Commission had, that there should be a limit on the number of days that someone can operate a short-term rental. So like, if they have a, a room that they're renting, you know, it shouldn't be a year-round thing. It should just be kind of the, you know, maybe 180 days total. The Planning Commission didn't really specify a number of days, but they just kind of made a suggestion that maybe the town council should consider putting a limit on the number of days. And so we, we would suggest 180 days if you did want to do that. And you could just, we would add this B to the, the resolution. It's, it's in there, it's added in there as a suggestion already. The Planning Commission also, and we wouldn't recommend doing this this evening, but they recommend changing the hotel user tax. It's currently a 10%, which is lower than most jurisdictions in Marin and elsewhere. It's a pretty low hotel user tax at 10%. You'd need a vote by the citizens of Fairfax to change it, so it'd be a, a long, a longer process to change it. So anyway, but Planning Commission wanted to recommend that you increased it, so. So that would be just, if, if you want us to consider that, let us know, and we can research how to, how to make that happen. The enforcement process is we've sent up letters, not three to some properties, and it depends on when they pop up. When they pop up on the system, then they get sent a letter, then they get two follow-up letters. And again, we had nine attempted registration. We think that since we've been sending letters, there've been less people doing short-term rentals, because we've seen them decrease on the RentalScape. So. And then we've added some enforcement options to, recently in the supplemental staff report that you have, to the short-term rental program, to kind of have some guideposts as to when we start sending letters, and then when the fines would potentially start, and also sending letters as, as Councilmember Hellman mentioned, to the listing Airbnb, of those types.
I think I did that. The mayor recommended that we also send it to the hosting platform.
Yes, yes, the mayor recommended that we change that. So we changed, we put that in there, so that we have a little bit more teeth in the enforcement. So that would be, because they, they can simply freeze out a potential host if they're not paying hotel user tax, or if they're not registered, that's required by the town. And I have talked to a representative from Airbnb, and at least they say that they want to be helpful to the town, so. So this is just a chart that lays out all the recommended changes. So this would be allow short-term rentals to operate in most dwelling types, allow for short-term rentals in most zoning districts, allow for a parking waiver if it's justified. That's the zoning on the policy side. Amendments to the property eligibility. Oh, and then the other thing that's been added in there is require, or streamline a little bit, I would say, require defensible space report from Ross Valley Fire to make sure that they're paying attention to fire concerns when they're, when they have a short-term rental. Cap on the number of days, and for later, potentially consider a hotel users tax increase. So this is the last slide, I promise. So the ordinance requires two meetings. If you were to introduce it tonight, you could adopt it at the next regular meeting. There's a public hearing tonight, so we should open the public hearing at some point and listen to the public. And then it's effective 30 days after adoption. The short-term rental program, which is a separate resolution from the ordinance, that could be adopted tonight with the, and it would be that supplemental with the, the changes that the mayor added on enforcement. And then just a note on timing is, since, you know, it takes us 30 days for adoption, these wouldn't be in effect, even if we introduced it today and adopted it in December, it wouldn't be in effect until January. So we have some registrations, people that want to register, but they can't because they're waiting for the results of this to either be able to register or not, depending on where this goes. And it would be good to give them some certainty and kind of have those firm code enforcement ground rules, so.
Before we answer questions, I want to just say that, first of all, thank you for picking this up. A couple of years ago, when Councilmember Hellman was mayor, I had worked with Michelle Gardner on putting this program together. And we didn't bring it as a punitive idea. The idea was we had folks who are supplementing their income by short-term rentals and coming to us wanting to be able to do that, but there was in our code something that did not allow any rentals under 30 days. So actually, Michelle Gardner and I worked on that, and at the time, we worked with host compliance. And you're right, these rentals are hidden. And at the time, we found out that what happens in jurisdictions that don't use these kind of services that can find them, that they spend thousands and thousands of dollars in staff time trying to find houses that look like the pictures. So this is a really short way of doing it, but at the time, there was a couple of things. We didn't have a planning director at the time, and so I think we made some missteps as far as limiting the zoning to restrictive. And the goal was to allow people to do this, but also, as you mentioned in your slide, protect neighbors, because we haven't gotten a lot of complaints, but there could be. And so we wanted to make sure that people could do this, and we could have some guardrails and protect our neighbors, who, there are some areas where, you know, not here that we've heard of, party houses, but things like that could happen. So we wanted, so when I found out that you were having a lot of trouble with folks wanting to register, I asked, do we know what the reasons are? And the primary reasons were things like the zoning is too restrictive. And, you know, you showed in that chart, and the fact that somebody who owns a duplex can't short-term rental the duplex next door, and things like that, which, you know, the, so the idea I asked for was, let's clean this up, and let's make this more doable for us. And one of the things you found when you came in was that host compliance had been bought by Grotz, who was basically doing nothing. So you, we lost some time, and obviously you came in a year ago, maybe now?
A little bit more, but yeah.
And had a lot more to do. And thank you for picking this up, and Kara Spencer, who's been our lead on this, and the Planning Commission for taking this up. So I just wanted to give you the groundwork that this is really about cleaning it up, but we also want to keep those guardrails, and, you know, let's see what we can do. So I know, Councilmember Ackerman, you had some questions.
So thank you for that presentation and for this work. I just wanted to clarify one thing. I believe I understand the answer, but just to, to help everyone be on the same page. When you say hosting, like, the owner of the house hosts the, that doesn't mean they're there. They could be, because I, I think the original concept that Airbnb and VRBO started with was that someone would go on vacation and they would rent out their house while they were gone. And that meant.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think the way that we're using the term hosting would be what you're describing, where they go on vacation, and while they're gone, somebody can.
That it's their house most.
But then also, then that's part one, and then part two is they, they may be there, and they have an extra room, and they're renting it out. So both of those would be.
So in the case of a duplex, by bringing, and, and you said the Planning Commission didn't really suggest adding duplexes to it, which it's not in the current code, that a duplex could be a short-term rental, but that staff is proposing possibly using, adding duplexes, that would be, the, what you would envision would be a duplex, if it's a maximum of 180 days a year, that they could use it as a short-term rental. That would mean that the other, at least 180 days of the year, would be vacant. Is that, is that the vision? That there would be nobody living in that other duplex? The owner would live in one part all the time, and then in the other part, it would be vacant at least half the year and rent it out as a short.
Yeah, if, if you wanted to put in the, the day limit, then you would be correct. They, they wouldn't be able to have somebody in there.
I bring that up because as it says in the staff report, and I very much agree, one of the goals, one of our sort of policy goals of all of this would be to preserve and protect housing, actual, real, long-term housing as opposed to short-term housing. And that, it seems like that particular policy of using duplexes, I'm guessing, I didn't listen to the Planning Commission meeting, but I'm guessing that that might have been their concern, that, that that, that duplex could. their concern, that, that that duplex could be used as long-term permanent housing. So I'm, I'm just clarifying that and trying to understand the rationale of it.
Yeah, and I think you, the reason that they suggested the day limit was for exactly what you're describing is that it kind of to, to make it, make a choice between, okay, if, if you're not going to use it for a long-term tenant and kind of add to the housing supply, then there should be at least a, a limit on the number of days that it's used for a short-term rental. So kind of maybe provide a little bit of an incentive.
Before you do that, I think Town Attorney has her hand up, but then we'll let you continue.
Yeah, I just want to say, there would be nothing that would prohibit somebody from renting it out for six months.
Correct.
Right. And I know of a situation, not in this town, but I know of a situation where that happens where during the summer, it's a short-term rental and during the winter, it's a longer-term six-month regular lease.
Yeah, yeah, you could potentially have a long-term tenant in there and they go away for a month and then it gets used as a short-term rental. Yeah, that will work.
Sorry for interrupting you.
Yeah, so under that scenario that you just described, then that, that's kind of cool because it doesn't, it's still giving a long-term tenant a place to live, but they don't seem to need it, according to what you're describing, for the entire year. So then it gives the owner of the property a little bit more income. So that sounds like that's kind of getting back to the basics, as it were, of what short-term rentals were originally all about is, you know, if you're not using the property, someone else gets to use it for a little while for a vacation rental. That's, that's cool. But if it's more lucrative for someone to just rent to vacationers than it is for them to rent to a Fairfax resident, then that, that's, that's not, one of our, one of our policy goals is to try to avoid that happening because that's what takes away housing. So, okay, just wanted to try to clarify that. And if you back up one slide, that, where you had a nice summary there of sort of all of the, all of the proposed changes there. Just pointing out, in response to at least one of the emails that we got this afternoon, that this was making draconian changes to, to hurt property owners. It seems like basically all of these, with the exception of number five, that we would require a defensible space report. That's the, about the only one that's not going in exactly the opposite direction. It's actually making it easier on property owners. It's making, the, the idea of what I hear you saying is that you ran into the problem when you reached out to all of these people who were doing short-term rentals. A lot of them simply didn't qualify under the current code and you were looking at that and, and realizing, you and Barbara, and were looking at it and realizing that some of those didn't qualify for reasons that really didn't make a lot of sense, like RS 5 to 7.7. Well, what's the difference between that and one of the other zones? Why not just include that? So this is really not making draconian things to hurt property owners. This is the opposite. So just pointing that out.
Thank you. Other questions of staff? I see none. So with that, I'd like to open the public hearing and again, Christine, if you could set the time clock and for speaker, if you could press the button.
Are we doing three minutes?
Two minutes as usual. Okay. And if you, if you would like to say your name.
Hello, my name is Michael Schroeder, the owner of 161 Landale in Fairfax. My wife Liz and I have lived in the house for 20 years, raising two sons who are now away at college. When the second one left a year ago, half of our house was empty most of the year and soon after I was laid off from my tech job. We saw an opportunity to earn some revenue by making part of the unused space a small one-bedroom, a one-bedroom unit with its own entrance, limiting the occupancy to two people. We listed it on Airbnb this summer and had numerous guests who enjoyed the guest suite. Our guests have said they loved it because they could walk to the market, restaurants in downtown easily and don't need a car. As it just has a kitchenette and isn't suitable for long-term rentals, and we wanted a place for our boys to come home at any time, a short-term rental was the best option for us. For us, this, for us, there will be at any time, a maximum of four people living in the house, either us and our two sons or two Airbnb guests. Because of this, the additional parking requirements for short-term rentals puts an undue burden on us as the only space we have to add parking would require us to remove the two redwood trees in front of our house that were planted by a previous owner. This would impact numerous squirrels and birds who make the tree their home and provide entertainment and a sense of purpose for our little dog. The parking requirement on short-term rentals should be removed as there's always a close, there's always close on-street parking nearby and we have not heard any complaints from neighbors or guests about parking. Making a one-size-fits-all requirement for parking is heavy-handed and a huge waste of space, as you can see with acres of parking our, our county has, becoming less and less necessary as people are opting for electric bikes, scooters and ride-sharing. Requiring us to have parking for our short-term rental would force us to remove the housing from the market, reducing the total supply of housing in Fairfax. This short-term rental is enabling us to stay in Fairfax in this house and providing us with essential income in a tough tech economy. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, council. One, I'd like to thank the council and our staff for taking away some of the regulations and making something more malleable and flexible for the community. What I see absent there, though, where you could have a problem, I think it should be restricted to only the legal stakeholder of the property should have the right to have this short-term rental. So for instance, if you had a tenant and then the tenant started doing this and they start renting out, you don't want to be in a position of having to evict somebody and remove somebody. Like for instance, on my contracts, I already say there's no subletting, no temporary rentals, no Airbnb, but absent really strong language, you're throwing something back into civil courts. So your ordinance here wants to be restricted to the stakeholder and not really a temporary person, because where would you stop? If I agreed on a temporary basis to rent it to somebody for a month and then they in turn decide to split it up each day, who would you guys go after for an infraction of your noise ordinance? Would you go after the current occupant for the day or the person that's holding it for six months or the property owner? So you want to restrict this so you have somebody accountable on both sides to just the property owner. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Todd Greenberg, downtown Fairfax. Still wondering why there's a lack of proper priorities with this town council, which doesn't solve problems that community members identify as needing to be solved and is spending town resources unwisely on things that the mayor herself has just said they haven't got a lot of complaints, but there could be. Well, there could be a lot of things that happen, but there haven't been. So why is there 39 pages right here when there's 12 pages for item two in your rulebook that's poorly considered? And there's 11 pages related to the homeless? Somehow there's a misallocation of resources on what the town's priorities are. Aside from that, there's a lack of transparency and this report says that it's not cost-justified and it doesn't even account for what the cost of staff time is or the lawyer that's spending time on this. This is a money loser and it takes away rights from people and it sets a town up for lawsuits. It's wasteful spending. The report indicates it's a failure so far, but you want to spend more money and dig a deeper hole. Again, your priorities are not straight. Half of this that you're maybe concerned about, the number of STR, short-term rentals, is caused by your crazy DSA Berkeley rent control ordinances that just went down in flames. You forced people not to rent normally. Wake up. Didn't you see the voting results?
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Deb?
Wait, wait, wait. Very punitive, restrictive ordinance, terrible. It needs to go to a vote when you take away property rights. You're worried about losing rental inventory for short-term rentals, yet you didn't give a damn when it was with paralyzing rent control and just cause eviction, when landlords pulled their mark, their units off the market in droves. You need to copy Ross, allow short-term rentals with no regulation. So I have my own whereas. Whereas Fairfax Plan Commission, Town Council seeks to create another harmful ordinance for a problem that doesn't exist. No verifiable data, data suggesting we have a problem with short-term rentals, just like with the rent control ordinances. Whereas a town council seeks once again to create an ordinance crafted by five people that is harmful to thousands of Fairfax homeowners and landlords. Whereas a town council seeks yet again to remove homeowners and landlords' property rights and their ability to survive in a never-ending triage of death by a thousand cuts. Whereas homeowners, mom-pop landlords have just gone through profound anxiety, financial hardship during three years of COVID and then the two years you added on top of that for this rent control. So now you have five years and now, once again, on top of that, you're, you're, on top of all that, Town Council once again has chosen, and the Planning Commission I might have, has chosen to further take away homeowners and landlords' property rights to use their property in any way possible, to pivot in any way to use their properties to cover their expenses. Once again, you seek to shackle homeowners, landlords, control of their properties to achieve financial survival. Therefore, herein by this mention, I suggest and request on behalf of thousands of Fairfax property owners and landlords, that this Planning Commission and Town Council get their noses out of property owners' business, that you back off and restore homeowners and landlords' constitutional freedom to control their properties and take care of themselves, as they always have, which is why they own property in the first place. Therein by this mention, request that this Town Council provide the public transparent reports of any cases or problems, short-term rentals of cause. That's exactly where the problem.
All right. I will say that I appreciate the fact that this is a positive discussion that you're bringing forth about short-term rentals, but I have to ask, why the micromanagement? You admitted there is no problem. It's, we don't have any problem with it, so why not, why take action when there is no problem? I believe less is more, especially in Fairfax. What happens when you take a person's right to supplement their housing costs? Taxes are higher, energy is higher, insurance is higher, maintenance is higher. There's a market for short-term rentals. Fairfax was built on short-term rentals. The history of Fairfax, 5,000 people a weekend came here and flooded the town and all these little places. It also brings business into town, more shoppers, more diners, more bicycle sales, more grocery sales, just more activity, more vibrancy, more people going to the movies. It's a fun town. It was built on fun. People want to come here for fun. Short-term rentals are obvious. My suggestion is to let's leave well enough alone and, you know, let the marketplace play out. I am glad that you are talking about something positive in dealing with it. I just don't think it's necessary to do anything because of the very reasons I just stated. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
First of all, I, I want to go back to the way that we used to address the council, which is where we're from and what our names are. Because we've had a lot of people, I have no idea where they're from and what their names are and whether they're from Fairfax or not. In this situation, I think, I think being overly prepared, a little OCD and a little paranoid is not going to help the town. It's not broken, so there's nothing to fix. So why, why are we wasting time doing this?
Next speaker, Scott.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. My name is Scott Hoxstrasser. I own the building at 141 Bolinas Road. In 2012, that used to be the sustainable Fairfax. I spent several tens of thousands of dollars bringing that building up to code. It's probably one of the only buildings in the town that has an occupancy permit that shows that it complies with all the standards and codes, including sprinklers and alarms. In 2012, I also got a conditional use permit to use this building and it's in a CL zone. So I really appreciate the effort of your staff and your council. If you're going to regulate and control the short-term rentals, please do so in the zones that were, they're more important, they're most important. And in that zone, the CL zone where my property is located, I wouldn't be allowed to have that Airbnb unit. And with the change, I will be for, except for a couple of issues with your policy that administers the zone. And that policy specifically is in ordinance 2244. And I would ask you to look at page three and four of that, wherein that ordinance on the section 4A lists four points for who the host is. Councilmember Ackerman asked about hosting. We don't host our Airbnb because my use permit allows me to have an office in the upstairs and a residence in the downstairs. And I am a permanent resident with a business, but I don't live there. And we do host Airbnb guests with all the necessary advices and rules and regulations and we manage a very successful Airbnb there. Your rules will allow us to have it from the zoning standpoint. Your policies don't because we're not eligible, because we don't live there, but we are permanent residents or permanent owners of the building and reside as a business there. I'd like you to consider changing that policy. Thank you.
Hello. Linda Berry. 492 Scenic Road, Fairfax. I live in a very low-density area of Fairfax. I own a quarter acre. I have been refused a permit because I don't have any off-the-road parking. I have a 100-square-foot rental space from, with Airbnb. I'm a super host because everybody loves staying there. They tell me how much they love the town of Fairfax, how they love going renting bikes, how they love going to Good Earth, how they love the restaurants there. So you're making, you will make income off of my rental. There's six parking spots besides the two that are in front of my house. My space is limited to one or two guests. They are only allowed to bring one car with them so I can accommodate guests. Perhaps with this waiver process, you're going to allow me to do that. If not, you would be kicking a disabled, low-income senior citizen out of her home. You would be making me homeless. You're trying to resolve homeless issues. So I would please request, I have a vision problem, I may not be able to drive at some point, so this would be my only way of making money. So I throw myself at your mercy. I would appreciate getting a parking waiver for the one or two guests that come that have an adequate parking space. There's never been a problem, as I say, I'm a super host. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Frank Agar from the Cascades. You know, Fairfax's history is one of, one of, as a summer resort town. Joe DiMaggio came here to Fairfax in 1950s and he bought Marilyn Monroe Place up on, up on Scenic. I think it was 309 Scenic. So I have a question. So I wonder how many short-term rentals are registered, you have in Fairfax now? You know, it's been what, two years since the ordinance has been in effect, at least a year and a half? And, and you had, you had a consulting firm that was going to do something for you. So I'm wondering, a question I want, how many short-term rentals do we have in Fairfax? What do we talk about? 10, 20, 100, 200? I don't know. And then, and then the next question I have is what is your income today? It's, the transit occupancy tax is 10%. Most communities have 14% occupancy tax, but Fairfax is 10. So what is your income today? I don't know if you can answer those two questions. You, you see very, very unwilling to answer questions from folks from the audience all the time, but I think those are two key questions that need to be answered.
In the staff report, Frank.
I'm sorry.
I thought in the staff report.
Both of those are in the staff.
Page three of the staff report.
It's in the staff report? Oh, how many? Okay, okay. Can you tell me how many? I don't have.
Okay, we'll answer at the end.
Okay.
We'll repeat that.
First of all, you know, there's, it's the First District Court of Appeal decision. And I don't know if your attorney's taking advantage of it, but if you make a request for any of the dozens of short-term rental platforms, they have to tell you where, how many and where they are in your community. That's the First District Court of Appeal decision. So you don't need to hire a consultant to do that. You just need to have your staff get the list of all the short-term rental platforms and send them a letter and a request that they identify all the short-term rentals in Fairfax. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there speakers on Zoom? There are four raised hands on Zoom. Five. The first speaker is Kay, followed by Michael. Kay, you are unmuted.
Hi. So I do support short-term rentals. They do bring money to our town and vibrancy. I like that 100%. Logistically, I don't understand about how you would monitor the half 180 days. How would you make that was compliant? And I'd also like to point out that to make a law, because you know somebody that only rents for six months, that is, that doesn't happen here in Fairfax. Maybe one person. So that's nothing I would even think to put into conversations. But, and I'm sorry, this is not going to be popular, but I don't support the wavering of parking requirements. I know my street, there is nowhere to park. There is nowhere to park. It's, there's no off-street parking, period. Bruce, I think you walk up, Frustock, you know. And you're required to have off-street parking if you put in ADU, not if you do a JADU, but if you do an ADU. So I would really not, I'd really like to see that off-street parking is required for short-term rentals. Sorry. Thanks, bye.
Thank you, Kay. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Michael, followed by Richard. Michael, you are unmuted.
Thank you very much. Michael Sexton, longtime Fairfax resident. I thank the council and staff for trying to eliminate some of the regulations surrounding short-term rentals. As discussed in the Planning Commission for the last two meetings, there have been very few complaints, approximately only two, over the last seven years, several years, in regards to short-term rentals. So I ask, what is the primary problem that all these regulations are aiming to solve? And I contend that there really isn't one. Short-term rentals are a very valuable resource to Fairfax. They provide valuable services to existing Fairfax residents, such as local remodeled refugees, family visiting grandparents, and people looking to move into the area who just need to get a feel. These type of activities should be supported and encouraged, not discouraged. Short-term rentals bring added revenue to the town, both through the hotel user tax and by spending that occurs at restaurants and other businesses of ours. If there are no current issues, then let's remove existing restrictions and allow the owners to utilize the property as they see fit. If you're not willing to remove all the existing regulation, then I suggest the adoption of most of the staff recommendations, including the addition of permitting duplexes as permitted units, like what was discussed by, just now, by councilman Ackerman. Duplex owners often need to rent out the unit between long-term uses. Now that the rent control ordinance have been repealed, there's not the same type of pressure to operate as a short-term rental, and therefore, there will be more, not less, long-term rentals. Additionally, I would strongly suggest that there be no limitation of 180 days. 180 days is completely arbitrary. It's not based on any, it's just based on a gut feel. And I think that if the unit is compliant, they should be permitted to operate all year long. As to parking requirements, they may be applied on a case-by-case basis. But ultimately, these regulations are looking to solve a non-existent problem. Let's repeal all the existing regulations regarding short-term rentals. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Richard, followed by Scott. Richard, you are unmuted.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. I just want to say, Mike, Karen Galloway's comments were interesting. And Mike is an old friend of mine, and I found something that we both totally agree on. If it works, don't fix it. But be that as it may, I know that the function of government is to keep an eye on things and make sure that everything is fair. So on this short-term rental ordinance, I think I agree with pretty much everything. I wonder about the 180-day limit, personally, myself. My daughter operates Airbnb next door, and she's just trying to raise two kids and working as a nurse at Marin General. And the Airbnb, she rents out about 200 days a year, maybe a little more, maybe a little less, pretty much covers most of her property taxes and enables her to stay in the house. So, and the rest of the time, the reason why we're not long-term rental is because at least 20 or 30 days out of the year, we have a huge extended family, and there's always somebody needing a place to stay, coming to visit from out of town, who are cousins, aunts and uncles, et cetera. So anyway, so I kind of wonder why this 180-day number was decided upon when, in our case, all that means is that it's going to be vacant with nobody in there for, you know, 100 days of the year, when it could be providing a service to all the great people that like to come to Fairfax and income to our family. That's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Scott, followed by Kelly. Scott, you are unmuted.
Yeah, Scott Valance. You know, I live in Deer Park, and I did send a letter to the Town Council earlier. But anyhow, I just want to recap a few points here. I do happen to have an ADU. I'm going through the process of legalizing, but it has existed for 16 years. And based on this current legislation, it looks like I'm not going to be able to rent it as a short-term rental. However, I do spend, I have spent most of the time living in the ADU as my primary residence and renting my front house. So I think you might want to consider some provisions for people who are actually using the ADU as their primary dwelling unit. And, you know, what's the case when I want to leave my ADU since I have a long-term renter in the front? Can I still rent while I go away my ADU? I'm so curious about that. In any case, I also agree with what Michael said and a few others. There aren't really a lot of problems, and I do think that more short-term rentals have popped up because of the legislation that was recently repealed by Measure I. And I think that of all those little dots that we see on the map, a lot of those Airbnbs are really just rented maybe a couple of days a year, or maybe a couple of weeks a year when people do vacation. So again, just, you know, encourage you to think about how big of a problem this might be, or the fears you might have about us turning into some sort of tourist town. And it's really great to see both Frank and Mike reminding us that Fairfax has always been a great playground for people to come here and enjoy the place. And the guests that I've had are not necessarily tourists. They're oftentimes family members, and they're coming here to visit friends because we only have one hotel. And anyhow, I'm really proud to provide something special for those people when they come, to introduce them to this town. And in any case, just, I hope that you can have a little bit more in the way of exceptions for the regulations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. The next speaker is Kelly, followed by, Kelly's the last speaker. Kelly, you are unmuted. You may need to unmute yourself. I think we need to move on. Okay, let's bring it back to the council. A couple of things that were brought up. One of the issues that Mr. McIntosh brought up is the idea of limiting it to the specific owner. And the definition of owner says this, "Any person who is the owner of record of the real property." As used in this program, the owner includes a lessee where the lessee is offering a residential unit for tourist home use, provided a lessee has written permission by the owner of record for the real property. I also want to remind folks that there is a permit waiver program suggested in here. But I do have one question, looking at the parking requirements. Says, "Short-term rentals must provide for one parking space for every four guests." So if somebody has one guest, do they have to have a parking space? Forget about the waiver for right now. This just says every four guests. So to me, that means you don't have four, you don't need additional parking space.
I think the way, I think it was intended to be if it was one through four, you'd need a parking space.
Okay, not clear.
It's probably not written very well.
Okay. And then to answer Mr. Egger's questions, on page three of the staff report, it talks about that the average that's been looked at right now, its variable, is 40 to 60. And Deckard has the ability to look at up to 100 hosting platforms. There's many more hosting platforms than what we are aware of, and for example, Craigslist. So even though you're absolutely right, you know, there is a requirement, there are many hosting platforms, and even though it was difficult to see on that map, because it got very washed out, they are able to track those. And otherwise, when we brought this a couple of years ago, cities are doing things like having people drive around looking for what looks familiar. So this is a good way to monitor. And Stephanie, did you catch the second question? I wasn't sure if I got that correct.
There was, yeah, there was a couple, well.
And then the TOT, I believe that was your second question, Frank, is that we're not, this is not a moneymaker for the town. Right now, based on the 12 registered, we would expect to collect about 18,000 plus in, and registration fees of 1,800. And it's not sufficient to cover our costs. But if more people register, we think we could likely cover the cost. So it isn't something that's going to bring in a significant amount of revenue. And as was pointed out by the director, any change in the hotel users' tax would have to go for a vote of the people. So while it's probably long overdue, we can't just do that here. So I think that answers your questions. And with that, I'll bring it back to the council.
And if I can just check that in response to Kay's comments over Zoom, that in the neighborhood around Frustock, and as I agree, because that's where I live as well, there's, the parking is really packed. So she was concerned about the parking waiver. So the parking waiver process, as it's outlined in here, would include a notice to people within a radius of the subject property. So Kay would presumably get that notice in the mail and would be able to respond and say, no, that's, she objects, right? There would be that process.
Correct. And so then there'd be.
There's also, just to clarify, the waiver is not just because you asked for it. It talks about, the parking may not be the standard size or configuration. On-street or off-site parking is readily available within 300 feet of the site. There's some other conditions whereby a waiver could be potentially granted. So it's not just that somebody would get a notice and then they'd have to appeal it. I think we're looking at this where it makes sense. For example, I think the woman here was talking about, or someone who called, the woman here talked about the parking situation is very limited. And someone also talked about having to cut down a redwood tree. So I think that would be taken into consideration, and most likely, a parking waiver could be available. So that's why you proposed it, correct? And I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, yeah. I mean, I was just basically going to mention that there's kind of, there's two, it's a two-step process, or maybe three steps. But there'd be, the applicant for the waiver would have to demonstrate why they're eligible for a waiver, so they'd have to demonstrate that the parking is available, or, you know, and then to the satisfaction of staff, then staff would say, okay, we can support the waiver, and then there'd be the notice that would go out to the neighbors within 300 feet. And then if they objected, they could appeal to the council. So there's kind of multiple steps to make sure that it's not going to cause an issue within the neighborhood.
And one of the steps that comes up is that providing the additional parking would have a negative environmental impact. And the example given is requiring removal of a significant tree. I also want to mention, one of the folks who called in, we brought this up earlier, but the prohibition on using ADUs after January, that are built after, or legalized after January 1, 2020, is state law. There is no exceptions available for state law. So, and then I will let Vice Mayor Blash ask questions.
Just mostly have one question. I think Richard brought up a point about 180 days, and I'm wondering about that, like, I can imagine having a time limit on single-family homes, right? Because you want it to actually be somebody's primary residence, not something that they're renting out constantly as a short-term rental, right? But if somebody has a room in their home that they're renting out, why would we have a 180-day limit? Why not, as he mentioned, make it a ongoing? If, you know, that case was also very interesting, because they're providing a service for, or housing for a vital type of worker that we tend to need in the county. I just am curious about the application of that time limit to different types of units.
Well, when the Planning Commission discussed this, they kind of debated that issue. And I think the argument was that, like, a time limit for a short-term rental would kind of force the decision between, okay, if I am limited on the number of days for a short-term rental, and I want to have a longer-term tenant in there, then they would get a permanent tenant. So then, there's kind of that binary choice between, do you have a, is it a short-term rental, or is it a permanent tenant? And then the desire to have kind of more housing for people that are actually living in Fairfax permanently.
Okay. So the concern was that if they could only rent it for so many days, they would be less likely to do it and more likely to take a long-term.
Correct. That was the thinking.
Okay.
Remember that that's not included in what we have before us. That was, I had asked, because the Planning Commission brought it up, that Director Byswenger at least have alternative language, if that's something that the council wanted to entertain. And I believe based on Deckard's work, the annual occupancy rate is about 60 days, based on what they've seen, which is higher than what was predicted back when host compliance was doing, which was something like 30 days. So, you know, I think the idea of a time limit, I'm not real supportive of it. And I think we've heard an example of where someone uses this to supplement their income. It's not, you know, it's, they're permanent residents, they're, you know, making ends meet, and if it, if it goes to 200 days, and we still have these other guardrails, you know, I think we're not as worried. And I think, did you have your hand up, Councilmember Cotrona?
Yeah, I mean, just to piggyback on it, I think one of the complicated, and generally, I'll just say, I think I'll thank you, and thanks to the Planning Commission for all their hard work on this. And I agree with much of what they've put forward to us. But that, the other thing that's come up a number of times now, tonight and in writing, is that there, I mean, of course, we know, there are a lot of funky units in Fairfax, and some, even if we did have the 180 days, they're not, they're not suitable habitants, you know, places for long-term rentals. So they can almost only serve the purpose of being short-term rentals in the community, right? So I would tend to agree on the, not having that provision as part of this. Okay.
Right. But I think that the important part is that for single-family homes, of course, you don't want, somebody's actual primary residence, you want it to be their primary residence, not something they rent out eternally, right? It's more like the bedroom, or the ADU, or the unusual unit that they have, that you want to have the, that you don't want to have a time limit on. Or am I getting that wrong?
Yeah, you're saying you don't want, like, someone to have, to start buying up a bunch of single-family homes and kind of hoarding them and then using them as a bunch of short-term rentals. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, I know people complained in my neighborhood that some Yeah, I mean, I know people complained in my neighborhood that somebody bought a house and fixed it up, and then they just said, oh, you know, they're just Airbnb and being that entire house just constantly. They don't even live there. And I was like, oh, okay. That are not a primary residence at all, that they just do the whole, okay. Like, and non-stop. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so Councilmember Hellman said that there are a number of those on her street. But let me ask one question. So we're talking about, this has to be the primary residence, right?
Correct.
And so for those ones that are on your street, that somebody is just Airbnb-ing out, that's not their primary residence, correct?
So it would be illegal under the current rules and the proposed rules.
And so based on what you put together, it still has to be the primary residence? So those people would not be eligible?
Yeah, so it just comes down to enforcement.
So the time limit doesn't fix, what it's really saying is, we don't want single-family homes that are just purely Airbnb.
Correct.
And that's what this is written to prevent.
Correct.
So we want to allow people to be able to say, I want to go on vacation for three weeks, and I want a short-term rental of my house for three weeks. You know, the whole idea why VRBO came out is, I want to go to Denmark, and I trade houses with somebody, something like that, correct?
Yep.
Okay. Other questions of staff?
I have a question, I have a couple of questions. So I just wanted to respond to some of the comments tonight, because in my mind, what we're, what you're proposing, what some of the, most of the recommendations are this evening are loosening.
Yes.
The policy. So we're not restricting the policy, we're loosening it. And I don't know that folks took the time to really, it's, you know, it's a lengthy staff report, and thank you for putting it together, but that's the idea here. And as far as, you know, trying to come up with a solution to a problem that doesn't exist, I think it's problematic that this program today isn't sustaining itself. So to me, that's a problem, right? And I know that there's at least a couple of hundred out there. I think it was first estimated 75, but I just, I, I think those of us who've lived here a long time feel that it's, there's much, much more. And I'm curious about how we could follow up with what Mr. Egger shared, as far as, if these, if the, if the large companies are required to provide that to us, can we use that information to supplement what, whatever, what's the new company? It's not Host Compliance?
It's Deckard, and they were, that's that map that they produce.
Yeah. Yeah, we, in fact, I have a, I have a contact with Airbnb at least now, so we can contact them directly.
Okay. I mean, if we know, if we know they're not complying today, and they haven't registered, I would, I really think we should be writing them and telling them.
Yeah, we said, I think that's what you said, we've, to all of the, the short-term rentals, we've now sent between one and three letters, cure letters, right? We just haven't done the monetary component of enforcement.
Yeah, we haven't started finding anybody.
Airbnb, or whatever solution it is, whatever vendor it is, can say, you're not in compliance and not, and they, can they no longer?
That's what they tell us they can do, yes.
And that's why I added the provisions to the enforcement, that when we start sending these letters, should we pass this, that it also goes to the short-term rental company.
Okay, I missed that.
So there, well, you know, it was a supplement. But I wanted to make sure that they're aware, that they got people out of compliance. So the first letter, should we pass this, goes out to the person that's the owner or operator. It also goes to that company, should it be Airbnb or whatever. Then the second one, same thing. Third one, same thing. And if we revoke it, it also goes to them.
Yeah. Okay. And then the gentleman who spoke, I'm sorry, I forgot your name, the Sustainable Fairfax site, original site, thank you, Scott. So would that situation be?
Yeah, the way it's currently written, it was intended as, you know, homeowners and residential units, so that's a unique circumstance. I mean, probably it's the solution, if you wanted to have hotel-type units in a commercial zone, you could just change the zoning ordinance to allow hotel units in a commercial zone. That would probably be the more appropriate way to deal with that situation. That's not in this.
Right.
I mean, it's a commercial zone, you can allow hotels in commercial zones, it just happens to be that CL is not a, it's not a place where hotels' uses are allowed.
So a single unit would be considered a hotel?
Well, you, I mean, the zoning code for that isn't written, so you could make it whatever you want. But if you wanted people to be able to have short-term rentals or hotel uses in a commercial zone.
And then in that circumstance, Mr. Hofstraussler would be able to, wouldn't involve the short-term rental ordinance at all, it would instead be a business license, basically.
I mean, it's a hotel use, so, I mean, I'm just brainstorming a way to, to.
Yeah, because I was also going to ask how that could possibly be addressed.
Yeah, because a short-term rental is very unique to kind of a house that somebody lives in and it's used as a short-term rental.
But would that, I don't want to get so far in the weeds here, but since he's still here in the audience, does that, would that allow him to still utilize all of those same platforms that are like short-term rental platforms?
Yeah, I mean, it's, we, we are only regulating.
Jeff, can you speak into the mic?
In the zoning ordinance, anyway, we're only regulating the use.
Yeah, not the, not the how.
Right. I mean, the program doesn't talk about platforms and how we contact them. I mean, but like I mentioned, that's not in this update. It would have to be an amendment to the CL zone.
And the, and the, in the case of, I think the other person, the resident, was named Scott. So if he's living in the ADU, can he rent out the house, the single-family home on the property?
I think so.
Yeah.
I don't.
I would think so, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes sense. If he's living in the ADU.
If, yeah, if, if you adopt these regulations.
Then he could rent out the house.
Because he's on the property.
Right.
So it would be a unit on the property, so.
Okay, so let's, should we wrap this baby up?
Oh, I just wanted to mention, just because you, the planning commission noticed exactly what the mayor noticed in terms of the error on the parking, and they actually did fix it. It just, I didn't make it into the staff report.
Okay.
It did get.
So it's one to four?
So it says, so the wording for parking, the short-term rentals must provide one additional parking space for every one, two, four guests onsite, in addition to the required parking for the existing residential use.
Okay, so that's actually in.
In the ordinance.
I only read the staff report.
Yeah.
I mean, I read the ordinance, but I was reading it as I was sitting here.
It didn't get fixed in the staff report, but the planning commission fixed it in the ordinance.
But again, that situation would probably be very eligible for a parking waiver.
Correct.
Okay. So let's bring it back. I, I got the sense, maybe I should just ask, I'm not supportive of the 180-day limit. I heard that from Councilmember Cuttrano. I just want to ask, is anybody supportive of that? Okay, no. It's not in there. It was suggested if we wanted it, we would add it.
Oh, no, okay, yeah, fine. No, I'm not supportive.
I'm sorry, I'm just kind of losing it. So what's written does not include it. It was in the staff report as a potential change. Should somebody want that? Okay, we don't want that. So with that, I would accept a motion. Do you want to make it, Vice Mayor Blash?
I move that we waive first reading and read-by-title-only ordinance to amend zoning regulations related to short-term rentals, updating the following chapters within Title 17, zoning of the Fairfax Municipal Code 17.008. Definitions 17.044. Exceptions and modifications 17.052. Off-street parking and loading requirements 17.084. RD-5.5-7 residential zone, high density. 17.088, RM, multiple-family residential. 17.092, CL, limited commercial zone. 17.096, CH, highway commercial zone. And 17.100, CC, central commercial zone. And adopt a resolution to update the short-term rental program, rescinding and replacing Resolution 22-44, short-term rental program in its entirety.
May I make the second? And then, so that was Vice Mayor Blash, and I'm the second. And could you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cuttrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay. I'm gonna suggest that we do item seven, and that we've got the 11:30 rule coming up, is that, that we move item two to the December meeting. And so we can probably do this before 11:30. Can we waive the 11:30 rule and just move item, make the motion to move item two to the December meeting? Would somebody, you could just say so moved, if you'd like it.
Yes, so moved.
Okay. Do you want a second? Somebody?
I'll second.
Okay.
We're doing.
Item two.
Okay, and Madam Clerk, could you take a roll call vote, please?
With fireworks, we.
Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cuttrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay, let's move on to item seven. And who is doing the staff report on this?
I will.
Okay, folks, I would just ask you if you don't mind taking that outside. We have one last item. Thank you. Go ahead.
In looking at the rules and procedures, that's an item.
Can you speak more right into that mic?
Yeah. In looking at the rules and procedures, which is item two, I looked at the code pretty extensively and came across some things that were of concern to me, connected with rules and procedures. The first one is 2.08030, Rules of Order, requiring us to use Roberts' Rules of Order as parliamentary rules. And 2.08040, Procedure in Absence of a Quorum. I think that one is extremely odd. I've not seen anything even remotely like that one before. And so both of these, Roberts' Rules, let me speak first to that one, is not really designed for a municipal council, and it is old, kind of clunky, difficult to work with. I do note that the legal California cities recommends Rosenberg's Rules, if you need rules of parliamentary procedure. And what I said in the staff report was that I was looking at that one to make sure that we don't have some of the, the same rules, some of the same problems with that, with Rosenberg's that we do with Roberts'. We don't currently follow Roberts', and I suggest that we not, because it can conflict with some of the requirements of Brown Act provisions and the like. And so I think that's, that's old and antiquated, and needs to be removed. 2.08040 is the Procedure in Absence of a Quorum, about how you can go to council members' houses and demand that they come to the meeting. And I think that's an extremely odd and problematic provision to have in a code, so I suggest we repeal that one as well. The whole point of doing the, what is item two, the rules and procedures, is to lay out a common understanding of how we're going to operate, how we're going to conduct meetings, how we're going to do agendas, and, and it really reflects what we do right now. It is a living document, can be amended at any time, it's a resolution that can amend it. It's going to grow, there are other provisions and parts of it. And so I think that just cleaning up the town code to make sure that we have just one document that we go to, to, to reference rules, is the best way to go. So that's briefly why I suggested it.
Okay, any questions? Michael, you may have been out of the room, but we moved item two to the December meeting, so. All right, we're not talking about item two, we're talking about item seven. And I would prefer it if you could keep your questions at this point. Are there any questions of staff? Councilmember Cuttrano, you're touching the mic, does that mean anything? No. Okay. All right, let's open it up to public comment. Christine, could you set the timer, please?
Hi, Todd Greenberg, Downtown Fairfax. I object to this report. I object to the recommendations that are being made. I think it's patently lacking and seeking to violate many rights and long-patterned practice. I think some of the representations the town attorney has made are false. Roberts' Rules of Order have existed since 1876, that's 148 years. They are used by the bulk of governing bodies in the United States. What she's left out of this conversation is that one can use Roberts' Rules of Order and have their own bylaws which supersede, including the state laws which supersede Roberts' Rules of Order. So they can coexist. Starting out with a limited rulebook, after 148 years' worth of refinement to Roberts' Rules of Order, where they're in their 12th newly revised edition, is throwing out much experience, more experience than this council, and more experience than this attorney has. There are Rosenberg's Rules of Order, another version, Jim Lockrey's Meeting Procedures. There are many other alternatives that have been well-established. I'm going to read a couple other things. Also, the town attorney is recommending, because it's peculiar, because she doesn't quite comprehend it, and she doesn't explain it, and she hasn't listed the words of these two code sections in the report, so the report itself is faulty and doesn't give information to people. I'm going to read something. Can you call a meeting to order without a quorum? If no quorum is present, the meeting can still be conducted, however, the business will need to be held over until later when a quorum is present.
Thank you.
That is why you do not remove what she is seeking to remove.
Next speaker, please, Frank.
Frank Egger, Frank Egger of the Cascades. We've always used Roberts' Rules of Order. We tried Rosenberg's one time, we didn't like it. So we went right back to Roberts' Rules of Order. What you ought to do is check, there's 11, even cities and towns in Marin, want to check with the 11 cities and towns and see what they're using before you decide you want to switch to, to Rosenberg's. I, I keep Roberts' Rules of Order on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Wow, how long has the attorney been sitting there? And all of a sudden, this is like a huge issue? Really? If you're going to change how the town has been run, then you need extensive public comment, and you especially need the new town council members being involved in that discussion. You don't come up with this in your last hurrah and throw this, and throw out what the town has been doing for decades. And as far as the quorum, I've been coming to meetings here for decades. I think you all know that. There has never been a town council meeting canceled for lack of a quorum. And especially now, with Zoom and the ability to have Zoom meetings, several of you in the town council have zoomed in, there's always been a quorum. There's no need for this. I mean, the only thing I can think of is, you know, somebody thought that, you know, the three seats up are going to be lost, and they could probably strong-arm the two remaining members to do what they want them to do. And so who would they be? I wonder.
Next speaker, please.
I saw 27 seconds. I was looking at the town manager and town attorney for those, for those who couldn't see. I saw 27 seconds. I was looking at the town manager and town attorney for those who couldn't see.
Good evening, Doug Kelly. Two things. On this agenda item, it just seems interesting timing. We have an election and now you want to change the rules that have been going on for a long time. It just seems like a bad time. But also, let's talk about rules. I'm going to read directly from the Brown Act. Public meetings of government bodies have been found to be limited public fora. As such, members of the public have broad constitutional rights to comment on any subject relating to the business of the governing body. Any attempt to restrict the content of such free speech must be narrowly heralded to effectuate a compelling state interest. Specifically, the courts have found that policies that prohibit members of the public from criticizing school district employees was unconstitutional. It notes two cases. These decisions found that prohibiting critical comments was a form of viewpoint discrimination and that such a prohibition promoted discussions artificially geared towards praising and maintaining the status quo, therefore foreclosing meaningful public dialogue.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Pamela Megs, 310 Cypress Drive, since 1986. I've seen a lot over the years, but I have to giggle. This is just absurd and I'm really shocked. If you want to be a leader, be a leader. Speak up, y'all. Not one of you have said anything about what's going on here, only the attorney. If you're elected, come on. I want to hear from each of you. Why did you agree to get this on the agenda, including the mayor? Each one of you, can you please explain to the public, why do you agree with this on the agenda? And I'd like to know why the attorney gets to speak and you don't.
Hello, counsel.
Next speaker, please.
First thing I'd like to say, the timing is really bad for me. If you want to change policies, you don't want to do it during your lame duck period, especially on a special meeting. So what was so, what was on fire to make this special meeting and have this subject here? So I guess most people can see through that. But I also want to bring up, and this is a real question for you guys. Do you know where the basis of our laws started? They really started in the 1750s, as Janet probably knows, by William Blackstone. And how he looked at the laws to really have this all operate together. He said, "The laws have to be based on practices and customs that people have adhered to for some time." So in many ways, you're going against the whole fundamental belief of our laws because you're changing a custom that we've all worked with, we accept, we have not seen a problem. Nobody has said like, "Oh, my God, this isn't working." But because there may or may not be an assumption, you're allowing your mouthpiece to direct something. And I think Pam's question really was really valid, that I think everybody on this dais, since you represent us, should bring forth your opinion briefly, so we understand it, why you're trying to change our practices, our customs, and things that we understand how they work. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Deb London, Fairfax. One is another name for Roberts' Rules of Order. Roberts' Rules of Order, which is also widely known as a parliamentary procedure, was developed to ensure that meetings are fair, efficient, democratic, and orderly. A skilled chairperson allows all members to voice their opinions in an orderly manner so that everyone in the meeting can hear and be heard. Roberts' Rules of Order is the most widely-used manual of parliamentary procedure in the United States. It's used by more organizations than any other government process or procedure. Why in the world? What is going on here? Don't you dare. What are you doing? This is ridiculous. I agree with what Todd said 1,000%. What Frank Egger said 1,000%. Abort. This is, do not do this. Again, there's no problem. Again, causing a problem where none exists.
Next speaker, please.
I'm pretty much in agreement with everyone. I'm not pretty much. I'm very in agreement with everyone. And the timing for me seems very suspicious and very against Frank and Mike. And I think you want to undermine them before they get on board with this council. And I think you really need to respect them and rethink this. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Mike?
I'm Mike. Yeah, the question once again is why change the rules now, right after the election? Why not four years ago, after that election? Why this election? Like item number two, this item has suspicious timing. Is it meant to thwart the will of the voters in Fairfax? Is it meant to stop Frank Egger, who won in a landslide? Is it meant to stop the mandate that was clear that the voters asked for? We don't need to change these laws. We don't need new unwanted laws where there is no problem. We need common sense back in Fairfax. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Are there any other speakers in the room? Seeing none of the speakers on Zoom.
There are two speakers on Zoom, Deb and Michael. Deb, you're up first. You're unmuted.
Thank you for hearing me, counsel. Thank you, Christine. I'm Deborah Benson from The Cascades. My question is, why are you bringing this up at this point in time? And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Michael. Michael, you are unmuted.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just have to agree with everybody else who's commented. I mean, you have so many people here who are just kind of wondering what you guys are doing and why this is brought up. There's been no clear explanation for this, for the timing, for the rationale behind it. Come on, guys. This is getting a little ridiculous. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers on Zoom.
Okay, bringing it back, I just want to mention that I sit on many boards and we use Rosenberg's. And it's because Roberts has many good things in it, but it does conflict with the Brown Act in some areas. So council discussion.
You know, I have to be honest and say that I don't, I don't know, I don't know what Rosenberg. I've never, I don't think I've operated in a body. Well, I haven't. So I don't feel, I don't feel comfortable. I don't, I don't know what the distinctions are and why one might be better than the other.
Well, I've had experience with both, but I can't tell you what the difference is between them. I did hear Janet say that, what was it, California League of Cities recommends Rosenberg's Rules. And the reason is because there are some conflicts. I wouldn't be able to tell you where they are between those. But, you know, it's sort of, what I'm hearing tonight is that, once again, all the public comment is about suspecting us of pulling some nefarious deed. And I, this isn't a nefarious deed. This is just trying to clean up some stupid things that are in the code that shouldn't be there, especially the second one. The first, there were two sections, both of which are about one section, one sentence long, if I remember right. I don't have them in front of me. The first one says, "Use Roberts' Rules of Order." And the second one says this thing about how you can go to a council member's house and drag them into the meeting. And I completely agree, that second one. Where the hell did that come from? But if that's what we consider, you know, it's just too scary to change that because it might be a nefarious deed, then the hell with it. You know, as far as I'm concerned, why bother? We're just trying to help clean up the code. But there you go. It's not worth fighting over.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, just wanted to say, I total, I mean, I've looked at Rosenberg's. I know the California League of Cities recommends that. I'm wondering if that's something where we should discuss that particular item in terms of adding a replacement for it, or if we should just take it out now? Because, I mean, we could discuss having a replacement for it and have people read Rosenberg's and compare it to Roberts' Rules of Order. The second one, the Procedure in Absence of a Quorum, is crazy. I mean, you know, we could test it out by some of us just refusing to come to a meeting sometime and see what happens. But I don't think that would be recommended. It just seems really kind of silly and superfluous. And I did want to mention that after I was elected, I was really desirous of there being a handbook because I noticed that other cities had those handbooks and that we didn't have them. And that as a new council member, I wanted a clearer idea of how things were to be run. So I was pretty happy when, you know, we were finally following through on this planned revision, that we would be cleaning up our code and really specifying what it is we're doing in meetings. So, you know, that's my process there. But I wouldn't mind talking about Rosenberg's versus Roberts' at some other time if that's what we need to do. But I really think the one about the Procedure in Absence of a Quorum is, you know, why not get rid of it? It's kind of silly.
Councilmember Cutrone?
Yeah. So I don't really know why either items, two or seven, were on the agenda. Kind of like Bruce Ackerman mentioned, is just like you get the agenda the same day as everybody else and it has some things in it. But I will say, we don't really follow Roberts' Rules of Order, at least not in my time on council. We kind of have our own parliamentary process. It's probably a simplified process, more akin to the Rosenberg's Rules of Order, which is not surprising because San Anselmo and Larkspur and Corte Madera and many of our Marin jurisdictions do not use Roberts' Rules of Order. They use the other one. So I think if, if we were to sort of modernize that process and streamline the parliamentary procedures for the town, we should also bring that forward simultaneously. I don't think we just remove stuff and then have nothing to replace it with as far as parliamentary process. I think both for, sort of, as I'm sort of sunsetting here on the council, and it's something that Councilmember Hellman has brought up since she joined the council, but there are, there have not been clear rules and procedures for a lot of people that are being on-boarded onto town councils, specifically this one. The same is true for our boards and commissions. And for years, we have now talked about both updating those sorts of procedures for the council. So any new council, not just veteran council members that get to come back, but, but any new council member that gets the privilege to serve in this position knows right off the start, what are, how does this work? How do I agendize things? How do I make a motion? How do I make a substitute motion? Like, all of that stuff, you unfortunately learn on the fly right now because the town is so behind. It doesn't have any of these sorts of rules and procedures written out. I think Roberts is the closest thing, but we actually, it's, Roberts is way more complicated than what we generally do at this level. And the same is true for trainings for boards and commissions as well. So I think that we ought to investigate this further. And I think the same is true for item two, which is going to be continued to the next meeting. But yeah, they're really important things. It's not, it's not some trivial matter. I think if there are no rules written down, then everybody is beholden to whoever's the loudest or whoever has the most crafty ways of bending the rules to their whims, you know. So anyway, that's my hot take for the night.
I think, Janet, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I, this item goes along with number two.
You need to speak more closely into the mic.
I said this item goes, it's a companion with number two.
So when you were working on two, you figured this out?
Yeah. And, and if it's, if it's possible, maybe you should continue this one, just like you did two. And we can potentially then, it can even be modified. I can finish the review of Rosenberg's and we can add, potentially to go to Rosenberg's instead of Roberts'. But I do think that it's, I want everybody to understand, it came about in looking at the rules and procedures. As well, I would like to bring forward a resolution with park rules if you're going to go down the path of adopting an anti-camping ordinance. And that also, just fair warning, is going to mean repealing a number of code sections and putting them in a resolution about park rules, having to do with being there overnight, having to do with alcohol and glass containers and no smoking and all that kind of stuff. So there will be a lot of repealing going on there. And I sense that that really bothers people and it's cleanup, is all it is.
I just, I have a suggestion is that I think for the first part of this, which deals with the Roberts' Rules of Order, I would suggest at a future meeting, maybe not the December 4th, because there's a holiday in between and there's a lot to get out, is I would suggest we do a comparison between Roberts' Rules of Order and Rosenberg's. Also, I think Councilmember Cutrone mentioned some of the jurisdictions that uses Rosenberg's. And I know San Anselmo does, as you said. I'm glad to hear about the others. Maybe we do a comparison, also point out where there's some conflicts with the Brown Act. But I'm wondering, as far as the thing about going to somebody's house and dragging them out, I'm wondering if we can just remove the part about the Rules of Order and just deal with section 2.08040 in this, and just remove the Roberts' Rules of Order part and do that at a subsequent meeting, maybe January 9th, that comparison and discussion. So I wonder if the council would want to do that. It seems like every time we try to touch something in the code that may have been there for 30 years, 20 years, 10 years, there's a suspicion that we're doing something. But there's a lot of stuff in our code that, as you read through it, it gets a little crazy. So what's, what's, if we?
That would be fine with me.
Okay, and Vice Mayor Blash?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay, so what I would suggest, if we're good with that, is on page one of the ordinance, where it says Fairfax Town Code, Section 2.08.030 Rules of Order, and we just delete the part that says, "Section 2.08.030 Rules of Order and", and instead it would read this. Fairfax Town Code, Section 2.08.040 Procedure in Absence of a Quorum is hereby repealed. So just that, and we have to change the title. So where it says repealing section 2.0, all right, we take out, "Section 2.08.030 Rules of Order and", and just leave in the other part. So we're basically taking the Roberts' Rules of Order part out of this ordinance. And it's very simple.
I would make that motion.
Okay, and with some.
We need a motion.
He just said he made the motion.
To waive first reading, read by title only.
Why don't I go ahead and do it?
Go ahead.
So waive first reading, read by title only, and introduce an ordinance repealing Town Code, Section 2.08.040 Procedure in Absence of a Quorum, with the changes noted in the ordinance as I just stated.
Second.
Could we do a roll call vote, please? Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Ackerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Hellman.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Blash.
Yes.
Mayor Kohler.
Yes. Okay. And town managers' report?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of, actually three things I want to mention. There is an atmospheric river headed our way. It's supposed to start very early tomorrow morning. So we're getting close here. It's 11:45. Through Saturday, the town is prepared and we just encourage members of the public to, you know, go to the Marin County Flood to, you know, go to the Marin County Flood website and look at their preparation items for themselves.
We have sandbags.
We do have sandbags and, sand and bags. But as always, the county and all of the towns encourage people to, you know, use the local hardware store and do their preparations in advance.
And I saw that the Public Works Director was buying more bags?
Yes.
Okay.
So a reminder, and I said this at our last meeting as well, there are preliminary election results on the Marin County's election site, but we need that to be certified from the county before we can certify. We are expecting to be able to do that on December 4th. But if for some reason the county does not complete their process before December 4th, then we would have to have a special meeting. They're not required to do it by December 4th, but we think that they will. So I'm just clarifying, that's our plan in case something goes wrong at the county level. And then lastly, we had discussion at the last meeting regarding the Marin Alliance, which is a dispensary. And we were intending to work on an item for December, but we asked for the address of their proposal that was very important to the council and to the members of the public. We have not received that. We've received other communication from Marin Alliance, but not the address. So I'm not sure if we'll be able to do that for December 4th.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, just to clarify, the county has to December 5th to certify the election, and Richard Halsted keeps putting December 3rd. And it's been my experience, sitting here, that the county always comes in early, but you're just trying to set the stage in case something unusual happens that we would do a special meeting. But I, I think we're going to be okay.
Exactly.
Heather? Go ahead. I just wanted to also clarify, I have not heard that the county feels that this storm is going to trigger emergency shelter for unhoused people. Have you heard anything?
That's correct. And the prediction is for about four inches total of rain, and the temperatures are not going down to the level where they would initiate the emergency shelters.
Okay, thank you. I did talk with the campers today. They are preparing, so, yeah.
Councilmember Hellman?
Were you finished with your report? As I was hoping to just share with everyone the latest with Station 21, because we expect that to be on the agenda in January.
So we met a mayor, excuse me, councilmember Hellman and the chief, Lauren Invertis, the Director of Public Works, on Monday, and talked about the station. And the plan is on Friday then to meet with the designer. And the purpose is to really get those, that design into the bid package. The bid would go out. We would have specific numbers then, because we have an estimate right now. And then we would be able to bring a word of the bid, lowest bidder, and financing plan to the, or financing documents to the council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're adjourned. Thank you.
The public's allowed to comment, and I do have a comment. I specifically?
We're adjourned.
No, because you did not give the public the opportunity to speak to something that was agendized on a meeting. And I'm taking this opportunity to say this, and it will be brief and it's salient. I spoke to Dan Miller up at our department and county. He said that they will have all the results certified by their department the week of November, excuse me, the week of Thanksgiving.
Okay, thank you.
He said they provided to all the clerks, and it's only the 5th, is because the board of supervisors likes to rubber stamp it. Nothing changes.
Thank you.
So we can use that.
Thank you.